Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for being part of our regular Board of Education meeting. Today's date is September 8th. It's 5:01 PM and we're going to move into open session. May I please have Yoni, would you like to lead us in the flag salute, please?
Mrs. Hacker, I'm just admitting him to the meeting now. He just joined.
Oh, I didn't see him. Okay, so we'll go with Mr. Damico. Mr. Damico, oh, there's Yoni. I see Yoni. Yoni, will you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Thank you, Mr. Kashanian. Okay, Dr. Breggy, we have a report for closed session, please.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Hacker. The Board has voted five to zero to approve the settlement agreement regarding the grievance 2020-21-1.
I think we have to approve the agenda.
I will move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And I believe it was seconded by everybody, Pam. I was trying to figure it out, but you can pick one, including me.
I heard Mr. Margot, so I'll go.
Thank you. The agenda passes, so you guys can all put your hands down. Thank you. Or maybe my screen is frozen. I'm not sure. Okay, so we're going to move on. Thank you. Let's see here. I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty switching. Okay, so we have that staff. We are going to go into we have public hearing and I'm going to go first. I'm bringing that screen up just a minute, please. Yeah, but little bit of public hearing here. Let's see. The first letter comes from a student comment. Hello, I'm writing this email to advocate my student voice at our school. I hope you guys will take the time to read this email and consider students' experiences with the most recent educational shift. First off, you guys have done a fantastic job and I cannot begin to understand how difficult this transition must have been for you guys. I want to thank you all for continuing to put students first. One, I politely ask for a serious consideration of office hours on Wednesday instead of a full day of classes. We as students have a right to push for the best education we receive. Due to these uncontrollable circumstances, it is virtually impossible to get the proper help from teachers when needed. Teachers barely ever have time to meet one-on-one or answer questions. I often find myself lost and unable to get help from a teacher. In addition, the amount of screen time is taking a toll on my physical and mental health. I have been a straight A student for my entire school career, high school career, and the amount of screen time and the lack of assistance from teachers has made me lose immense amount of motivation. By the end of the day, I feel sluggish and helpless. For the first time in my life, I'm getting daily headaches. I appreciate everything you guys have done and are continuing to do. I think we can all agree that student feedback is crucial to our education. We are all learning as we go. I hope you guys will take Wednesday office hours into serious consideration. Thank you for your time and continuous effort. It does not go unnoticed. All the best. And that comes to us from Victoria Hirsch. The second comment, being on Zoom for four to six hours a day for five days is taking a toll both the students and staff, both on students and staff. It should be considered that Wednesday could become an office hour day. This would allow students to catch up with all the work and give time to staff to prepare and grade assignments. And that comes to us from Erica Butler. The next letter is Wednesdays should be off. The day feels too long and exhausting because we have every class period and entire week is draining. The school days are too long to sit on a screen for nine hours a day. Many students are facing eye problems and back and neck problems. And that comes to us from Rose Parnia. The next letter is from Kayla Nehamdi. It's only been two weeks that we've been back at school and I've never felt so drained for class calls alone. I sit at the computer starting as early as 7:00 AM and finish class as late as 4:00 PM. Then I proceed to sit here for another several hours to complete numerous assignments. For some reason, we're being assigned more work than ever, but I have much less access to my teachers. Many of them seldom respond to emails. And if I try to catch them for a minute after class calls, they say they don't have time. This brings me to my next point. Almost every teacher holds the class past the end time. This detracts from the already few minutes I have to get up from my desk and I'm forced to just transition to the next meeting with no substantial break. My back is in pain and my vision is blurred. I know these circumstances are special and that the administration is trying their best, but I do feel the desire to be the most productive and detracting from both my physical and mental health. Please consider at least establishing Wednesdays as a day for office hours rather than a full day of lectures. And again, this comes from Kalen Nehamdi. The next letter is from another student asking for the same. Her name is Saeda Agi Ban. I'm sorry, it's Agi Banitaba. And we'll just add it to the comments, Mrs. Kashar. It's the same email about having Wednesdays off for office hours instead of class time. And the next letter, future waivers. So, dear Board of Education, I hope that when we're ready to open, the administration is ready to submit the waiver for our kids to return to school, especially K5. The sooner they return safely, the better it is for them socially and emotionally. I know that our administration has been working hard and I appreciate, however, when LA County says it's safe for in-person school, I hope our administration is ready to go on the waiver process. Thank you, Deborah Terme. The next letter is, let's see here, to Superintendent Breggy and to the Board of Education. We often talk about tolerance and having the fortitude to teach tolerance to our children, tolerance for other people's opinions and tolerance for free speech. The latter, of which was recently trampled upon by one board member who removed me from her BHUSD Board Member Chat without warning because she did not like what I had to say about the anti-Semitic teaching AB331. There is something we should never tolerate. That is discrimination towards the Jewish community, efforts to malign the Jewish religion and efforts to teach Jewish privilege. Our Board should be united on this front. There should be no place in our educational system to permit, let alone mandate, this anti-Semitic rhetoric in our education. With the newly revised curriculum of AB331, we want to ensure our school board's critical responsibility in keeping the public school system free of agendas that cause members of the student body to be victimized based on their national origin. Particularly troubling is that the ESMC is partly based on Education at War, a book which features deeply anti-Israel language and references, which is shocking given the fact that this is the federal policy of the United States of America, that anti-Zionism and anti-Semitism. If we adopt the curriculum as is, our school system would instantly become a hostile environment, making Israeli-American and Jewish children feel unsafe attending school and welcome in the classroom. This should not be tolerated. We need to neutralize, not create prejudices, and bring people together. I therefore ask that we, one, ensure that the ESMC remove references to biased anti-Israel content and any national origin discrimination, including removal of BDS and other anti-Semitic rhetoric. Ensure that, too, ensure that education about social movements that will be taught, will be taught, aim to improve the lives of minorities in America, like MLK's teachings, for example. The BDS movement harms minority groups in America and perpetuates advocacy related to a foreign conflict that should fall outside of the scope of high school ethnic study courses. And three, ensure ESMC includes teachings about anti-Semitic harassment, vandalism, discrimination, and rhetoric, not just anti-Semitic violence and hatred, so that there is an accurate portrayal of various methods of anti-Semitism. Four, ensure the removal of any references to Israel as a settler colonial state and remove any references that connect or equate anti-Zionism in the Middle East to anti-racism and anti-imperialist movements in the United States. And five, ensure that our educators strongly emphasize the point of exploring multiple, often competing sources of information and ensure that educators refrain from conveying their own political views and potential biases. Six, the curriculum requires that students will write paper detailing certain events in American history.
Mrs. Hacker, I'm sorry to interrupt. That's three minutes.
Okay, great. So she has more points. We will not read them. But that is submitted to us by Marie Nieman. Number seven, how are anti-Semitic AB331? How are you as board members in the community with such high Jewish population okay to vote for a class which will be teaching anti-Israel and anti-Jewish teachings and curriculum? I will not allow my children to attend such classes where their Jewish heritage is questioned or put down and taught that they have a certain privilege when they clearly do not. You are bringing back the days of Nazi and everything we as Jewish families all stand against. And that is from Tanaz Rizvani. The next comment, could you please comment on why the program is being considered that while claiming to teach diversity tolerance and address many forms of oppression fails to take into account any history of anti-Semitism? Are you aware of all the controversies surrounding this program? Is it going to be mandatory? And that comes from Miss Daphna Hollinger. The next comment comes to us from Mrs. Shelley Azizi. Dear Board members, it is my understanding that AB331 has passed Assembly vote and is set to be signed into law by Governor Newsom. The bill will require a minimum one semester course that would be based on an ethnic studies model curriculum that school districts can either adopt or use to fashion their own version. As you may know, there has been a lot of controversy around this bill since it was first introduced in 2016. Many groups, including Jews in particular, fear that the model curriculum to be adopted by the CA, by California Board of Education is biased against Jews in Israel. Specifically, it is the chapter on the Palestinian Israeli conflict paints a severely distorted picture of the conflict in the Middle East and amounts to indoctrination of our children. In addition, it paints Jews as privileged race, a privileged race. If the bill is in fact signed into law, it is extremely important that any curriculum our district adopts properly represents our Jewish community here in Beverly Hills, including Anandeth Analysis of Mizrahi and Sephardic Jews, Jews that hail from the Middle East, Africa, and Spain. More importantly, it is essential that Israel is portrayed objectively without any bias that is so common against the media and on college campuses. Many parents are understandably upset and concerned that this board will simply adopt the model curriculum. I ask today that you unequivocally take a stand that any program this district adopts will represent our community fairly and objectively. An ethnic studies program is important for our children to learn about the culture and fabric of this great state and nation, but it cannot come at the expense of Jews, especially at this crucial time in history when we are facing an unprecedented level of anti-Semitism and anti-Israel bias. Thank you for your time. And again, that comes to us from Shelley Azizi. The last letter I have to read before I give it over to Mrs. Marcus is, dear Dr. Breggy, I'm reaching out to you today in regards to the ethnic studies mandate. We want our Board to go on record that they will unequivocally veto any type of curriculum that pushes an anti-Israel or anti-Semitic agenda. Please make sure our voices are heard. Thank you. And this comes to us from Mrs. Seppi Sarabi. So I want to say thank you to all of those who've submitted and we continue with public comment. And I'm going to now give the floor to Mrs. Marcus. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Thank you. Dear Beverly Hills Unified School District Board Members, it has come to the attention of the Beverly Hills Unified School District parents that our district will be given the choice to add an ethnic study curriculum known as AB331. As you may know, this curriculum started from the controversial 2016 California law to establish an ethnic studies curriculum known as AB2016. Please be on notice that this curriculum has maintained anti-Semitic teaching that directly affect and breach our rights and liberties as granted to us by the US Constitution. Please be aware that this new curriculum, although is supported to teach history of racism and encourage equality for all, rather sneaks in hate against Israel and its people. We obviously contend that this is repulsive at every decent level and not stay quiet about it. We believe that as our representatives, you should speak out against it, too. By way of this letter, we are asking the school board to give out unanimous statements that will not only entertain any way to vote to implement this curriculum in our Beverly Hills Unified School District and furthermore, to publicly object to it and condemn it outright. We respectfully ask you to review and respond to this letter at today's board meeting. Please be informed that we, the Beverly Hills Unified School District parents collectively and individually, will sue for damages and reparations if such curriculum ends up in our schools and classes. Please be on notice that implementing this anti-Semitic curriculum in our schools is tantamount to group libel, as well as within the ambit of the law in Beaumont-Buhrnayes versus Illinois. I thank you for your immediate and kind attention to this very urgent and time-sensitive matter, respectively Jasmine, Kahon, Rastagar, JD, and the Coalition of Beverly Hills Unified School District Parents. Or optimization of the high school schedule is the next letter. Hello, esteemed Board members. My name is Ellie Raymer, a junior at Beverly Hills High School. I am writing to you today to discuss an issue that is rather important to me and a good chunk of my classmates, the schedule. The main issue we have with it is the long hours of screen time with a lack of opportunity to ask questions to teachers. Asking questions is one of the most integral parts of the learning process. A lack of this will lead to decline in the retention of the information learned. If you don't retain the information being fed to you, then there's no point in learning it at all. A way to fix this would be turning Wednesday into a day of optional office hours. This would give students the ability to go in, ask teachers questions, while still allowing students time to get away from the screen. I believe this would help very much with the comprehension of the material learned. I ask that you please consider this proposal. I do understand that there is a state mandated amount of time required to be in class, but those details can be worked out once the issue has been brought to your attention. Thank you for your time, Ellie Raymer. Dear Board Member President Hacker, thank you for your continued leadership and an excellent start to this school year. In planning for our eventual return, I would like to know what considerations or improvements have been made to the existing ventilation system to protect against the COVID transmission via the indoor classroom environment. As noted by the EPA, there is growing evidence that this virus can remain airborne for longer times and further distances than originally thought, in addition to close contact with infected people and contaminated surfaces. There is a possibility the spread of COVID-19 may also occur via airborne particles in indoor environments in some circumstances beyond the two meters or six feet. Have any of the federal, have any of the federal COVID relief funds been directed to improving the ventilation system, particularly at Beverly Hills High School? The EPA recommendations attached below suggest increasing ventilation with outdoor air. This is particularly problematic at the high school due to the air contamination from the ongoing construction and metro work. Given this limitation, I would imagine an excellent ventilation system with advanced filtration systems would be necessary to minimize the spread via the air. Can you please discuss this with the Board and Dr. Breggy and share with the public what measures are being taken to reduce the students' exposure upon their return? She's included some of the frequent questions and answers that have been spread by the group that she says in the thing, but I just put that on and let that be part of it. The last thing she says in that, though, is interesting. By themselves, measures to reduce airborne exposure to the virus that causes COVID-19 are not enough, since airborne transmission is not the only way to expose to SARS-CoV-2 would potentially occur. The next letter deals with the ethnic studies curriculum again. Comment, I am a first-generation immigrant who was forced to flee my country due to religious persecution. I have been a US citizen for over 25 years. It appears that the new proposal ethnic studies curriculum includes content that is anti-Semitic and anti-Israel. It is entirely inappropriate for a public school to include content in its curriculum that is anyway biased, promotes the political agenda of a unique group, or will lead to discrimination against any particular religion or ethnicity. Promotion of religious bias is against every fundamental freedom for which our government stands. And a public school that includes or requires the study of such biased content will undoubtedly violate the strict anti-discrimination laws which have been enacted in our country to protect minorities. I am wholeheartedly against including anti-Israel propaganda and content in our ethnic studies curriculum and believe that including such content will lead to promoting anti-Semitism, which has no place in our schools. In addition, including such content will likely lead to an anti-discrimination lawsuit. I hope the BH Board will place the welfare and well-being of our students and the promotion of the importance of a bias-free school as a priority and exclude this inappropriate content. Thank you for your consideration. Signed Roxana Korshtidi.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Does that conclude your list? I think it does, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment and those will be entered into the record into the minutes for the next board meeting. I thank everyone for writing. And we will be having a discussion about AB331 shortly, so if you're watching or want to hear more or learn, please stay tuned. Dr. Breggy, we're now going to move to staff presentations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so we're going to start off with an update. We've been, the last couple of meetings, we have been providing updates on our facilities. And so I will turn the presentation over to Mary Jane Wilson. Sierra will kick us off on our oil wells, our legacy oil wells.
Good evening. We have a very brief presentation. The Beverly Hills Unified School District has an approved site restoration plan from CalGEM, the agency that's in charge of oil and gas wells. And the plan includes restoration of the legacy wells, if such is necessary. Next slide, please. And the plan includes restoration of the legacy wells, if such is necessary. Next slide, please. Originally, there were seven legacy wells that were known to exist on the Beverly Hills High School site. None of the wells were plugged to current standards. Some of the oil and gas intervals were just filled with dirt or mud. Next slide, please. Wolfkill 23, which was found to be, and Rodeo 107, were found to be in the way of the tunnel for MTA. And MTA is covering the costs associated with plugging those two wells on the campus. Currently, Wolfkill 23 is almost completed. It will be completed by mid next week. Next slide, please. The three wells, Beverly Hills High School 1, Beverly Hills High School 2, and Rodeo 106 are in the location in the corner of this old softball field. Those three wells are currently being excavated and assessed. The other two wells, Rodeo 114 and 115, have not been located as of today. 115 is in the sidewalk. And pretty soon, we're going to start on Rodeo 107. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mary, for being with us tonight. I will, I thought this was an important piece of information to bring forward to share with the community, being that it's costing so much of our taxpayer dollars to repair this situation. But it's an important project indeed. And so thank you again for being here. And also the same goes out to Mr. Blake. If there are any questions on the board, this is your time. So we'll go around the horseshoe, Mr. Margot. I'm sorry, Mr. Kashanian. Let's start with you. I apologize.
No worries. I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you. Don, I could see you, Mary Jane. The Wolfkill 23 and Rodeo 107, I've noticed that the location of those legacy wells are not in a location where we were going to be doing foundation work, per se, because we had already done foundation work on building B1 without having an issue with those wells. And Wolfkill is out on the temporary portable classroom area, which we had no plans on digging deep and doing foundation work there. So under Calgem's current requirements, do you feel that we would have had to remediate those two wells had Metro not put their tunnel, you know, in that location? Would we have had to as part of? I know the ones on the field we have to, because we're going to be scraping and digging and moving the entire field around. But those two, I'm wondering, because the master plan for construction doesn't have us building anything right there. So I'm just curious how that would have played out.
That's a good question. For 107, we would have abandoned that well by virtue of its proximity to building C.
Okay.
And so hence, Calgem recommended we actually move building C to the east about 10 feet to keep a large separation from B1, which the well is about, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Jane, it's about four feet from the footing of B1?
67 inches. I know it well.
So it's very close to B1. And yes, we would have, in the master plan for mitigating the wells, would have done 107. And frankly, 106, we would be, all of the wells were required to locate, identify, and to abandon them to current Calgem standards. So both of them, we would have done anyway.
Even if we weren't? Well, what about Wolfkill? Because we're not building over there.
Go ahead, Mary Jane.
Wolfkill 23 perhaps might not have been located or abandoned if it were not for the tunnel.
Okay.
When they were drilling their exploration hole for the tunnel, mud came up from MTA up through that well, and that's how it was located.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. I'm good. Thank you, Mrs. Hacker.
Okay, Mr. Spitz?
Well, I just think that the public should know that these so-called legacy wells, they're really ancient wells, and they have nothing to do with the with the ventricle wells, the 19 ventricle wells that are being plugged up and abandoned. And, you know, it might help to tell the public just roughly how old these wells are. That might be helpful, Mary Jane.
Four of the wells were, I should say to Mr. Spitz through the chair, I'm sorry about that. Four of the wells were drilled in the 1908. Five of the wells were drilled in the 1908 time period, 1908 to 1910. The other two were drilled in the early 60s, 59 and 60. So they are younger than the ancient wells, but the ancient wells are really, really old over 100 years.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. That was an excellent point to make. And thank you, Mary Jane, for clarifying that for us. Any other questions, Mr. Spitz, before I move on? No? Mrs. Walker Schuman?
So I don't have any questions. I just want to make sure that the public knows, because there's been so much attention around these projects and how they kind of overlap. Metro cannot tunnel underneath our campus until these oil wells are completed. These, the abandonment, the proper abandonment of these two wells. So I just think that's important to share, that that's not happening until these two wells are complete. And to just keep that in mind. That's all I got.
Mrs. Marcus?
No, everybody's asked all the questions and made the comments. I'm good to go.
Thank you. And I have no questions. I wanted to say thank you. As I said, I think this is an important project to kind of keep the community involved. And it's costing a lot of money. So it's always good to let them know and understand where we are in this process. And so thank you again for being with us tonight to explain this important project. We're going to also have a presentation on the update on the Hawthorne Auditorium. Mr. Blake, are you going to be leading us in that discussion? Or who is?
This is sort of getting unmuted. Thank you. What I would like to do is first, hopefully it doesn't bore you intensely, some of the design, construction, and circumstances we've been working through on the drawings with DLR. And then give you an update of where we are in terms of DSA submittal. So here's the, here's the part, I guess, if you're a construction person, you'll find this interesting, but when we, DLR had the portion, originally DLR had the entire site in design. That's the remodeling and demoing a portion of the building, keeping the center of the building, and remodeling the auditorium. That was the original set of drawings. And so when we began to initiate just isolating the auditorium and doing the design process, as we have gone through that, it's been a very interesting challenge. And the challenge for us, and what, it takes a little longer than expected, is that the building itself, there's some pieces. It's kind of like a giant jigsaw puzzle. So we have fire life safety code upgrades that has occurred. And what that means is DSA is requiring more work than would have been if you just did the whole site, which has to do with ADA access, access and path of travel. So site work, site. How do we make this work if we're just going to do the auditorium without finding ourselves with DSA and DSA saying, well, we want you to upgrade all of the ADA, all of the site, knowing that that portion, for the most part, would be demoed. So we've tried to take our time and make sure that as we pick this thing all apart, we don't end up spending more money to just do the one building. So first part is what we call fire life safety. That has to do with ADA access, path of travel, those kinds of things. The next piece that was a bit of a challenge is the actual building. When we talk about mechanical, electrical, and plumbing scopes, all currently, all of those scopes are connected as one building. And so if we just do hazmat and seismic retrofit in the auditorium itself, we're trying to avoid not having a complete mechanical system, because it's all connected. So where do the ducts start, stop in the existing building and connect? So that's been more of a design challenge for the architects. And I've been involved in it as well from a constructability review standpoint. So those are fire life safety, and what we call MEP's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing scopes. Where do you break it apart? Where do you cut it up? And we want to avoid creating the one building having by itself, its own mechanical system, its own fire alarm system. Fire alarm system is an interesting one for us because as we've gone through a lot of the sites updating and bringing the fire alarm systems up to code. So one of the challenges is if we do a fire alarm system submittal with DSA for that building, it's likely that they'll require us, as they've done at Beverly Vista, require us to upgrade all of the systems for the entire site. Again, as we begin to touch these things, questions about, well, eventually this is going to be demoed, how much, where do we want to start and stop? So it's been a challenge on the engineering side for these systems. The building itself, the structure itself is the challenge. The building is connected. It's contiguous with the rest of the building, or classrooms are on the outside wall. And how do we do this for creating an envelope for the hazmat and separating that space from an occupied space? That's a challenge. And demolition in that space and making sure we're not needing to go inside of the occupied space. So these have been some of the challenges, and I appreciate your patience with my construction concerns. But those are the things that we've been working through. And that brings us on a timeline, and we still are, and we're pretty close to making a DSA submittal. So in January of this year, began to have conversations with Wade. Begin the conversations establishing a 7-Eleven committee. And so as that began to mature and bring in August, I think it was August 11th, the board approved the 7-Eleven committee. And the work of the 7-Eleven committee is to evaluate and look at future use of sites and make a recommendation to the board, I believe, if Wade, I don't see, Wade's here, either in the end of October or the beginning of November, to make a recommendation to the board for all the sites in the district, but particularly Hawthorne. If that recommendation is to the board and accepted is not to use it as an elementary school, and we felt it was prudent, Wade and I talked about this, to not make the DSA submittal until after the 7-Eleven committee made the recommendation to the board and the board decided its future disposition.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll go around. Noah, Margot, you're next. Do you have any questions or comments?
I'll kick it to Yoni real fast, so.
No worries. No questions. Thank you.
Okay. No, I don't. Thank you, Don, for the update. I could imagine what a 2,000-piece puzzle this must be trying to put separate that project within an existing old structure. So thank you for keeping it going and informing us of what's going on. If we do go into DSA as soon as it's ready, do you feel that we'll be out of DSA and ready to build when El Rodeo is finished?
It should, the plan still is to have that contiguous. Without a break, we'd be able to execute that out of DSA, do the the lease leaseback program, get all that on play. It should be at the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spitz?
No, no further questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
I don't have any questions. I just think it's worthwhile to remind people that this construction program is quite like a jigsaw puzzle, but it's almost like a 3D jigsaw puzzle. So there's so many different considerations that go into trying to figure out how it all fits together and what's the most effective way, not only to complete the projects, but also to use tax dollars. So, you know, I just, I think this is one of the parts of that. It's a little more complicated than a lot of people know. But thank you, Mr. Blake, for your advice and leadership. That's all I got.
Mrs. Marcus?
Thank you very much, Mr. Blake, for that update on the, and to explain all the challenges that are involved. You know, I don't think that the people in the community are aware of this when they see that they put in the budget, I mean, in the bonds issue that this was going to be approved and thinking it was just going to be a snap deal. And it wasn't, it's not going to be that. And it's going to take a lot more effort in. And I hope that they will understand and appreciate that because it's unfortunate. I'm, the thing that I'm concerned about now is that there's been such a long delay and the budget that was set aside, should we happen to go ahead with it, would we still be able to have the amount of money that was budgeted for it, still do it in that amount of time? And I'm thinking that, you know, every time there's a delay, prices go up. And it's not going to be as easy to do with the amount of money that was exactly budgeted for. As I.
There's two answers to that. One is, as I've kind of mentioned, as you, the original drawings were what we call DD's Design Development, the level of development of the drawings, which simply meant the consultants weighed in on, you know, different components. It wasn't a construction set of documents. So when you move to construction documents is where, there's two places where cost containment is critical. When you move to the construction phase, construction document phase, that's where we're finding all of the parts and pieces and implications and we're resolving them. So one priority is get a set of drawings that DSA can approve. That's one scope piece. The other piece is how do we build it? DSA doesn't tell us how to build it or how to sequence it or how to organize it. But they do tell us, well, if you're going to put a fire alarm system over there, then we want you to put a new fire alarm system in the entire school. Things like that come out of when you're finishing the construction documents. So the program that we use is once we have, we feel a construction set of documents that have identified those scopes and kind of ferreted out all of those things, then we do a constructability review and we do an in-house estimate. And those estimates are based on current prices. We don't use an engineering company or the architect to price it. We use market, people that are in the market, and we're able to determine what that scope is. And so where we are in the program is my recommendation is before we go to DSA, there's a few things left to resolve on scope that will impact price. As you know, we're pretty effective at finding potential cost savings and mitigating issues. Once we get to DSA, there's another cost point. When we come out of DSA, as we've discovered in B1, B2, B3, and El Rodeo, DSA's desire for what we call over-engineered, it's a quotient. So what would otherwise be an engineering dis- Uh so what would otherwise be an engineering this beam or this column could be this big based on standard engineering. DSA can say, we want it to be a hundred and thirty, a hundred and sixty. At El Rodeo, it's a hundred and sixty percent more engineering. On building C, when we went with DSA on that project, it was three hundred percent increase its standard engineering criteria. So that's the next point that we need to confirm. Uh when, I mean, usually when we get the first or second back check from DSA, we have a good idea. And we begin to do pretty, pretty detailed estimates at that point. At that point is when I would feel comfortable in bringing back to you, here's the cost. The cost that was put in the bond was a number based on an engineering estimate that was here when we came, that was from the architect, as with some of the other buildings and we put an escalation, I I put an escalation algorithm on those costs to get us to a certain place in time. And so I feel comfortable, but I cannot guarantee that the price that we estimated in the bond will be the final cost. I hope that helps.
I hope you're right.
Someday I'd like to build a building that's just straight up.
I worked in the building, so I was there at Hawthorne, I was in the school for a long time. I know that auditorium, I can just imagine trying to, with all the pieces of that building.
The auditorium itself is pretty straightforward. It's when you're doing all of this in an occupied space next to a portion of the building you're going to demo in the future.
Thank you.
Um thank you so much again for being here. Um I had a question. So most of the, the architectural design work that took place um was before your time, right? It took place around twenty fifteen?
Uh no, not most of it. No, the, the design development drawings, there, there are three state schematic.
Yeah, I remember, but that was like in twenty fifteen, most of it was, was done, I think, in twenty fifteen. It's been a while because I haven't seen much. So that was done a long time ago.
We initiated, we initiated the design in two thousand, continuing moving the design forward in two thousand eighteen.
Right, um but that's still, we're, we're still um not anywhere near the approval process for DSA, correct?
No, we're, we're really far along.
Far away.
No, far along in the drawings and preparing them. I'm just saying, I felt it's prudent to not submit to DSA until the seven eleven had reported to the board.
Okay, well, I'm glad the seven eleven is finally going to be moving along. Took a long time to get that done as well. Okay, thank you so much for being here tonight again. We're going to move the meeting over. Any other further questions, board members? No? Okay, we're moving forward with um our agenda. Thanks again for being here. Have a good night. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Uh we, we need to pull stuff.
Anybody have? Sorry. Well.
Hacker, I wish to pull item uh nine C.
Nine C, anybody else?
Yeah, we need to pull nine B one.
Can we also please pull nine H I N J? I just have some questions about those.
Sure, nine H and J?
H I N J.
Oh, I N J, okay. Anything else? Okay, so I may, I'll make a motion, I'll revise my motion to approve the, the consent calendar minus items nine B, nine C, nine H, nine I and nine J.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, that's an I, that's five zero, thank you. Okay, so.
So approval, nine B one, uncertificated personnel report.
I'll second that.
I need to um ask to amend the motion to remove um lines thirty three to thirty five, please.
Okay, who made the motion, Mrs. Um?
I accept the amendment, the motion.
Are you removing them um entirely?
No, vote on them separately.
Okay.
What, what were the uh?
Yeah, can you state that for the record, please?
State the record that you'd like to remove the items, please?
Um items thirty three to thirty five.
What?
I guess Mrs. Marcus is asking if you could please uh state the rec- for the record where those lines.
Oh, do you not have it in front of you, Mrs. Marcus?
No, I do not, I.
Oh, okay. It's, it's um, it's a assignment of a long-term substitute teacher.
Oh, okay, there were three teachers?
It's one teacher. It's just three, it's the, the, the item takes up three lines, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So are we not voting? Okay, so uh Mrs. Mark Schuman, you already made a motion, I'll second that. Um, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda.
So we have to make, somebody has to make a motion to approve those items.
Do you just want to recuse yourself? I should just ask.
I'm only recusing myself from the line items. I don't, I'm not giving, I didn't want to play my hand up front here.
Okay, so let's do, let's just, um why don't we do this? Why don't we, we have to now make a motion to approve items thirty three and thirty five, right?
Thirty three to thirty five, correct.
Yes, okay, so um I make a motion to vote on items um on the certificate report, lines thirty three to thirty five. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spitz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that passes, thank you.
And I, and I recuse.
And then you, and we'll note you. Thank you, Mr. Margot.
Thank you.
Um we will move on.
Nine C.
Nine C, please.
Ratification of agreement with A.J. Fistis for Swim Gym exterior painting services.
To pull that, Mr. Spitz?
I asked for this item to be pulled. Uh I'm very much in favor of having an agreement uh with this firm for uh painting Swim Gym exteriors. But um in the agenda that I saw, the latest agenda that I saw, there was no agreement attached. And so I'm um, I'm a little hesitant to uh ratify an agreement that I haven't read. So I'm just wondering if this item can be placed on our next meeting.
Can I answer you? I asked a question about that in the questions and answers. And I was concerned of whether there had been secondary bids, other bids. And was informed that there were other bids, so that was, I was able to get that in my question, so.
But the, the issue is the agreement's not attached.
Right, his question is different. His question is, or his concern, I should say, is more about the attachment not being, the, the contract not being attached.
Sorry, okay, all right.
Yeah, so that's a valid point. So um does staff have an answer for that?
President Hacker, I'm not sure why it's not attached, but um we can definitely bring it to the next board meeting, maybe on Friday or whenever the next board meeting is.
Great. That would be helpful, thank you. Is that you satisfied with that, Mr. Spitz?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
So we have to withdraw the motion.
We'll withdraw the motion. Who made the motion?
I did, I'll withdraw it.
Okay, and who's seconded? Okay, Mrs. Marcus, you withdraw?
I'll second.
Okay, very well. The mo- the item is withdrawn, so we will eliminate that.
Should we move?
So all those in favor, yeah, we'll move to table. So I moved to table item nine C in the certificated report. Um do I have a second?
A second.
Margot, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, and we will move on to items nine H.
So I'll make a motion to approve items nine H, nine I and nine J, because I think Yoni probably has the same question on all.
Second, yes, I will second that and um discussion.
Thank you. Uh I'm just wondering why the funding for advanced dance is coming from ASB.
It's a good question. So um it, it is my understanding, uh and I'm not a hundred percent sure why it works this way, but um that this gets paid through B H E F through, but it's paid through A S B first. And I, they think that there's something to do with the um, with the, the choreographer, the costumey. But it's, it's all kind of done that same way and then the funding then comes from B H E F.
So Michael, I also can add that a lot of these are done in the dance program are done through sponsorships. And I believe the ASB is a pass-through for the sponsorships.
I see, thank you, that's all.
There, there is a way to reconcile that because it gets replaced. And so I know that the, the books are all in order, uh you know, at the end of the day.
Okay.
Okay, did, did you have other questions for the other items since they were all together? Yes, any other questions? Okay, great. So all those in favor of approving items nine H I N J? That passes five zero and that concludes, thank you, five zero, and that concludes our uh consent calendar and we are now going to move on to staff presentations. And we have a doc, uh we have Mr. Margot who wanted to give us an update on the latest with Laxta. Thank you.
Yeah.
What Laxta is for.
Yes.
Thank you.
The Los Angeles County School Board Trustee Association, uh which the, our board always has a um a member as a representative for that to attend the meetings. Um because of COVID, they've been doing now monthly meetings via Zoom and they're having guest speakers. The last meeting was with Dr. John Patrick, who is a communication consultant. He spoke about building trust between schools and the community with communication during the pandemic. He emphasized community-oriented communication and stressed that communication is paramount to successful leadership. He discussed that school districts need a vision on how to evolve from the pandemic. And he urged everybody during this time to find a sense of common ground. Everyone wants kids to get a good education and to be safe. And we start from there and we can move forward in our conversations. He discussed terms motivated reasoning, the Overton window, god terms, devil terms, and cynics theory of start with why, which is um what is your cause and what do you believe? That's where you should start these kind of conversations. Uh he also spoke about who speaks for the institution. We have institutional leaders, which are um the professionals and they speak with authority, they have the power to take actions and enforce decisions. And uh but the cons of that are uh politics and leader fatigue. People get tired of hearing from, from people sometimes. And then there's organic leaders who are trusted community members. Um and the pros of them acting as spokespeople are, they're easy to identify. Uh they re- they're reverent to powers, a basis of trust. Um they model compliance, the cons, of course, are time constraints and the lack of power to enforce the compliance because they're just community members. He also discussed about how to speak in online environments. This was uh interesting as well. Um emails and texts, you should always start with shared values, be concise, stay on point. Um choose a font that is sans serif. And this is the second time I've heard this this month. You know, serif are the little curly things like Times New Roman in most books. He said for, for visual, for communication, it's distracting and, and it's better to choose fonts that are not using those. Um chunk texts into small, easily digestible ideas, not long paragraphs. Um also with video conferencing, use straight postures, think like a nightly news host. Um think about what's in your background, keep your hands if you can in frame because gestures come from the heart. So they supported that, modulate your voice so people can detect emotions and they don't feel like they're being spoken to by a machine. And always look into the camera as much as possible. Um start with your shared values, of course, stay on point and be brief um when you speak. Um and the final point you made that citizens right now are craving reductions in uncertainty. That's what our, our world is full of, and he said that's what people are looking for, so to address that when you speak. So that is my wrap-up on that speaker and after the next one, I'll bring a little report. I didn't want to take any more time, but um they are interesting meetings and, and everybody is invited, of course, from the board. I know Dr. Bergy um is invited as well sometimes, so thank you very much for that. I'll take questions if you have them, but I'd rather just move through the rest of our business.
Thank you. Any questions, the board member, Mr. Margot? No, thank you, Mr. Margot.
Thank you.
For that report, we'll move on. Dr. Bergy?
Thank you. And that is a good segue into um our communication that we are providing. And I think that um you, you hit it right on the head, Mr. Margot. I mean, it is, uh it, it often depends on who you're talking to. Um I know that, that sometimes we get uh that we are providing too much information, other times we're not providing enough. Um I think that if you look back to um even January, when we first started to report about COVID nineteen, that um uh you know, that that information was coming out uh certainly much less frequent then than it, it was starting in March, where um I think that we've been able to provide communication um uh pretty much every week. Um and, and so it is a balance of uh, you know, not wanting to put out the same information over and over, but also keeping people in- informed. And so lately, what's been happening um is very clear to everyone that um uh we're, we're doing a lot of pivoting on our feet. Um and as I reported back out to you um just at the end of uh the week and even the week before that, a, a lot of changes that are happening. Um and a lot of, it's really interesting to see politically what happens within the state uh as well because information is put out by the state of California and Governor Newsom. Um and then we watch our county having to uh respond uh uh, you know, and react to uh what was put out. Um and so we were a little turned around uh and very surprised when information uh was shared from the state of California and Governor Newsom with a new direction, um which then uh uh took away from our current system, this, the metric system, where I've been reporting to you and sharing with you um the six metrics that we were looking at to come off uh the monitoring list. Uh and so that was a, a bit of a surprise that that happened. Um and I don't think that this is a secret. Um in, in, in the area of transparency, I think that um, you know, it's a really good thing that uh, you know, information is shared uh with everyone. Um what is difficult for uh educational leaders is that everything is released at the same time to everyone. And so oftentimes, we don't have that chance to react, much like the county didn't in this particular situation. Um when it's released to everyone, um I just want people to be aware that, that we don't get tipped off. Um this information is shared and it's uh very much a surprise uh to all of us. And so um it's not information that we're, we're sitting with. So um you know, the state came out with their uh new color-coded system, um doing away with the uh six metrics and that was on a uh August twenty eighth. And then just last week, there are two different revisions to our county, LA County Public Health Order on the second and the fourth. Um and I can share with you that um in meetings that I've, I've had with county officials, uh that they're still reacting to what the state uh has changed. And so uh there are some similarities and some differences, which I have already pointed out to everybody, um that the, this, the system that we have for uh physical reopening um is going to be using this tier. And this is, will, will guide us uh from what they're saying into um our next steps. And so the uh purple, which is that widespread area, that's where we're at now, the two metrics that they're using. Um they are using uh the case rate and the uh, the positivity uh tests. Um and you can see that, you know, we are in the purple area, that's where we were placed. And um uh we will be there for uh quite some time from what our experts are telling us. Um you know, this is uh similar to the monitoring system in that um that once our numbers and they've just, it's, it's really, they, it's the same numbers, but instead of looking at them at a period of um fourteen days, now they've looked at like our, our um case rate as being, um you know, it's a daily rate. So instead of looking over fourteen days, um now they're looking at an average of just seven days to give us a daily rate. Um and I think this morning when I looked, I think we were at um ten point two, I believe, uh for our, our new daily rate. I will say it's interesting because um, you know, there's always a lag in the data. And so we're looking at. And so we're looking at probably August 12th, I believe that that data was from. And one of the concerns that the county has is like a holiday weekend, as we just had, because the, it won't be known for a couple of weeks from now where we fall when it looks at the number of tests and also that case rate, which seems to be the real, that's going to be our, the real tough area for us is the, for LA County is that case rate. So much like the monitoring system, however, once we are able to meet those two metrics that are there, the case rate and the positive tests, once we meet those and actually qualify for kind of the red area, much like the monitoring system, we have to be there for 14 days. So we, we have to make sure that we maintain those metrics of being below seven and below eight percent for a period of 14 days. And so at that time, that is when they will start allowing schools to reopen up in that area. That's the area. So, but that is something that we have to get to and we are not close to that right now. It looks like we are, but we are not there yet and they do not think that we will be there. They're experts. They're just projecting right now. That is going to be several more weeks. Though in moving between those tiers, you know, after we get to red, I think it's important and we will still continue to report that information to you. But once we're in red for two weeks and we have announced our plan to, to move forward and how we're phasing people back, it won't really matter so much to the, to the public as far as going into orange and into yellow. And they're not sure what even green is possibly look like right now. But it's the real issue here. And I think that, you know, the elephant in the room is moving to that red tier is going to be our biggest goal to move forward. So as I mentioned, what was interesting was that this happened and the county had to react. And so another area that the, the state of California started was to bring back small cohorts of students. And so the way that our county looked at that provision from the state of California was that, you know, they're looking at it from a perspective of that we all want this to work. And I think that, as Mr. Margot had just pointed out, there isn't anyone in the room that doesn't want to do this and do this in, in a way that we continue to be successful. And so I think it is important that we, we go in with the mindset that we do this the right way. And if you think about it from a perspective of the county, it, they want all this to school districts to be successful as well. So starting with small cohorts of students is a way to bring back students and staff in, in an approach where it is manageable and that we could do so in a way that we are successful. So that again, the phase and approach, you start bringing more and more people back. So, so right now we're not able to, even with the small cohorts, we're not able to bring back large groups of students. In fact, the county has made a decision that we are looking at students with IEPs, our English language learner students. And essentially we're looking at our, our high risk, high need students, students that need to have assessments. And if you don't know this, you know, that's a pretty big number. If you look at the number of, the total number of students that have IEPs in our district, total number of EL students, we're approximately over 500 students. And so that's a really vast group. And so it's, and I know that everybody kind of looks at that and they think that, you know, this is great. You know, this is me. This is, you know, I have a child with an IEP. You know, they're going to be going back. And, and I have to tell you that this is a very slow approach to bringing people back. And so there are a lot of factors that we need to consider. You know, we have to look at the type of programming. We have to look at the type of staffing. We have to look at the changes in the public health order. And there, there's just a number of things that we have to look at because we have to be sure that we are making the right decisions as we phase students and staff back in so that we don't find ourselves in a position where like in a particular school, we have three or more COVID-19 positive cases where we have to look at, you know, closing down or that students are going to have to be put through, you know, that they have to be home quarantined and, and, and going through the, the contact tracing that we have all set up. You know, that's going to be pretty hard to. So we want to make sure that we're following the guidelines from the county and that we're doing it in a way that we are able to phase students back and staff so that we are successful. And so I just want people to understand that there is a, you know, there's, there's a, there's a reason behind this slow kind of roll back into the physical structure. It isn't just a hope and a whim. It is, there is intention behind a lot of the decisions and it's so that we can manage the group. I want to go back to, if you remember, there was a lot of talk about the elementary waiver. And I can tell you that, that, you know, in my personal view, based on what I know, there were hundreds and thousands of kids in LA County that, you know, would have been eligible to come back for an elementary waiver if that was provided to school districts as they said that they were going to. I personally believe that that was, that they weren't sure of the interest in that waiver. And I think that that kind of defeated the purpose of the county, bringing back people in small groups that are manageable. Certainly less than 10% of your total school site population, it can be back. So there is a lot of thought to that, you know, not knowing what that number is. And then the day before that application process was supposed to open, that that was all of a sudden not available. And I think that it was a little bit too uncertain for the county to bring back that many students all at one time. And so, you know, there's a little conjecture on my part, but it's, it certainly fits with what I've been seeing at the state and county level and the involvement that I am able to have with this type of work. And so, you know, that was taken off the table. And as you can see now, it's not even something that's available to any of our schools in LA County at all. So the elementary waiver is, even though had high interest, it is not available at this time to any school district in LA County. But what is available is now looking at the small cohort of students. And so that's what we're looking at now is how do we provide a safe environment for our students and staff? And with our students that are, are, are high risk, high need students? And then begin to phase students in this way to ensure that we're successful along the way. Again, things are changing on a daily basis. What I reported out on Friday before the holiday was that there was an application process that's already changed. And now that's more of a notification process and a form that you need to fill out rather than an application phase. So as you can see, that things are changing as we speak. And as I said before, and I think this is an important part, that the, the county is still reacting to what's happening with the change in the state system. And so one of the most important things that I want you to realize is that the, the state can impose and they can have and share with us their, their new system and their new, their tiered approach. Our county, and this is an important piece that I want everyone to understand. Even though the state says, here are some parameters, here's where we're going. You know, this is, this is the way we see you as a state of California. This is how we are going to guide you back into the physical reopening, that our county can be more restrictive. They can't be less restrictive than the state of California, but they can be more restrictive. So, and we've seen that time after time, you'll see that LA County has been treated a little bit differently because of the high number of cases and, and, you know, just overall positive cases and the number of people that are testing. So you, you know that that's what's been happening and that will continue to happen. So right now we are looking at a few, many different factors. And we're looking at being able to, how do we provide service to our high risk, high need students? So that we don't jeopardize the rest of this phase in approach, which we know is coming and we're excited about. But we also want to be really careful that we are not one of those school districts or universities that does something too fast, too quickly, and then they find themselves sending everybody home. And that's a story that's been happening and the, the county is very worried about potential Labor Day holiday issues and what that might do to our environment at this time. So we are looking at program by program. We're looking at the staffing and the, the programming as far as the space that's needed, the school that's needed. We're still looking at the public health order in certain areas that we still have some questions about that the state is, is having to get back to us on answers and other school districts because things are changing so quickly that somebody made the change. And in some areas, like as far as the regular testing, this is just one example, just so that, you know, welcome to our world. And if you, you think about the regular testing program, which is currently required under the public health order, that we're finding also the, the CDC is also saying that, you know, that they, they have a position where they don't believe that it's necessary to be testing asymptomatic people. And so, you know, that now puts a, a little bit of glitch into the public health order because the public health order says that we need a regular testing program in place. And so it's, there, there's just some competing needs there. We're not the only district that's experiencing this, but I just want you to know, this is not something that's, you know, we're a very complicated organization to begin with, we are. And I think most people know that. But to begin with, you know, we also have, you know, people that are working, who are experts in the area of health and safety that are not in our world of education. And so there's a lot of decisions being made without having the ability to apply and transfer some of that safety information to a school organization. And so that's why this becomes such an every, this is a 24/7 operation when it comes to the exchange of information and how it's implemented and how it sometimes goes back when people in the areas of health and safety did not realize that we couldn't do something that was from the, from the lens of a health expert that they didn't realize because we are a school organization. So there's just a lot of back and forth that I want you to be aware of that, that happens behind the scenes that, that makes us appear to be a little bit slower, but it doesn't change the type of analysis that we're doing. Because that is, we're, we're looking at every program. We're looking at all of our students, looking at all of our staff in the environment that we have. So I just want you to be aware of that. It is really looking at the, the, the actual program so that there is very little risk of contamination of students being mixed with other students and, and, and staff members having one group of, of students the entire time. And sometimes it just doesn't work out that way. And so that's why we're having to go through and looking at our programs one by one. So I just want everyone to know that's kind of a long explanation, but wanted to give you a few examples of, of why it often takes as long as it does. So behind the scenes, things are moving really quickly. And I know that it's so great. We have a lot of staff that have come into our schools and that they are in their classrooms. And, and that's great to know that and to see that. We are doing a lot of behind the scenes protection so that when we do have our, our opening, that, that can and will happen when it's safe. This is just an example at Beverly Vista Middle School, the type of Plexiglas that's up in our office areas that will be protecting not only our staff, but also people that are coming into contact on a more frequent basis than some staff members. And so we've, that you find that throughout our, our district. There's still a lot of unknowns, as I mentioned. The, the county, again, reacting to this, this latest public health order. And based on the numbers, they will be coming back and they will be sharing, again, whether it's more restrictive or maybe it's that they're going to go with the state of California. But it, you know, they have the right to make this, depending on our cases, a little bit more restrictive. So those, those changes we expect to see, as, as I mentioned before, there were just two revisions last week. And, and we get them when the public gets them. And so again, in the name of transparency, that's awesome. But in the name of how it works in a school district and how we actually are able to digest that information and then make changes to our protocols and our procedures, that then takes a little bit of time and it's difficult because people are expecting us to react quicker. But we get that information real time, just like the public. So that I just wanted to share with you, but we're working really hard to continue to share this information with you. As soon as we get it, we digest it and then we send it out and we'll continue to do so. I'm very excited. Over the last six, seven months, I've been talking about our strategic plan, which I, I realize that, and I'm not trying to be insensitive to, to our community talking about this at this time. But this has been a goal for a long time. We cannot remember the last time we had a strategic plan in the school district. So I'm not trying to be insensitive in any way to anyone. And I, because I've received the emails. I absolutely understand our priorities. The priorities are bringing back our students and staff in the most safest manner possible. However, we have to have some direction on where we're going as a school district. And so we have been able to, over the last six, seven months, pre-COVID, just we've determined where we're at as a school district. We have assessed our strengths and our opportunities, our weaknesses, our threats. We've put that into paper. We are examining our current programs, some of the issues that we have. Some of them, we're going to talk about shortly with some discussion. But we've now been able to put some long-term direction and goals in place with, with some action plans, which is pretty exciting to be able to have that type of accountability as we move forward. We really took a different approach when it comes to the strategic plan. And for those of you that have put strategic plans together in your workplace, you know, you, you know that, you know, it's, it's really the kind of thing, the more you put into it, the more you're going to get out of it. And so we wanted to ensure that this was not going to be put in a binder and put on a shelf for three years. So we have built in ways to hold ourselves accountable. And so you will be seeing and hearing a lot about the strategic plan because it's really meaningful to our work. And so we, in order to do that, we really made sure that, that it was, that it is going to be, you know, a document that, that truly guides us because that's what this is supposed to be. So we've ensured that through aligning it with our LCAP, which is required and gives us direction. Our site plans will also be reflective of our strategic plan. Our finances are also going to be aligned. So our purchases will be aligned to the direction that we're going as a school district. And so we've kind of boxed ourselves into an accountability piece so that it is usable. And, and we have given ourselves a little bit of flexibility because even before we started this, COVID-19 hadn't hit. And so each year we will again, look at our strategic plan and then make any necessary revisions that we need to do. Fortunately, we were in a position that we were still working on it while through our COVID-19 efforts, that we've been able to provide updates and share with our Board of Education. And, and I can assure you that they provided us with more feedback and suggestions than we could have ever imagined. But it was good feedback and it was valuable feedback. And we went back as a team and then began to make the necessary changes to our plan, which strengthened accountability. It strengthened the, our goals and what we were trying to achieve and increased the type of measure that, that we're seeking so that the goals actually mean something. And so, you know, I commend the board for taking the amount of time that they did, especially during these efforts when we're inundating them with this information of, you know, school and COVID-19 and everything else. So I'm appreciative that they took the time that they did to not only read it, but provide really meaningful and purposeful feedback. but provide really meaningful and purposeful feedback. So it's on our agenda for approval tonight. We're excited about that. Our next steps, if it is approved this evening, is to take some time so that every stakeholder group knows the plan and knows what expectations are, what the accountability is. And so it, there shouldn't be, and there will not be, a person in the district that isn't familiar with the plan. I think it's, it needs to be said, but I, I believe that, that everybody understands in our organization that, that every single person that is a BHUSD staff member, parent, student, and community member, in some way contributes to our success as a school district. And so that's going to be a big part of our job is to not only have a plan that's up and it's working, you know, and it's actually giving us some good measure on our success. But it's also one that, that people in the community are aware of and people understand how they contribute to our success because we all have a piece of that. So I'm really excited about that possibility and moving forward. We've spent a great deal of time and it's, you know, it's, it's time for us to now take it to the next step and really make this part of our everyday fabric in this school district. So that's exciting for us today. Just really quickly, the, the program that we have has changed, this has evolved. And this is ongoing efforts from working in the state. Another nice surprise was that, that our, providing food for Beverly Hills kids is, is now been opened up and it's not just for students who are in our free and reduced lunch program. It's for all Beverly Hills students. And I can tell you that I was there and I was talking with staff and, and I really wanted to see what was inside because I just, you know, couldn't believe it. If it was pickup for the whole week, I was like, what in the world could possibly, you know, what are some of the things? And it was like going to a grocery store. So I'm very proud of this effort. I'm proud of the state of California. I'm really proud of our district and even, you know, our parents that are saying, look, it's just been a crazy time. And, you know, to take advantage of this is, I would hope everybody would do this. This is, this is available for everybody and it's like real food. So it's like going to the grocery store because I went through that box and I couldn't believe what I saw. So it's, you know, it's not going to last forever. So I would say it's convenient. Information is on this slide, we've sent it out, but I would take advantage of the fact, you, you will be so surprised that it looks like, you know, it's like Instacart, but even better. So, but I would say take advantage of that because we're very excited and that will be on a limited basis. So that's still available. That's my report and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. That was very comprehensive. And what else do you do with your free time, I wonder?
You know, we're, we're surrounded by really good people. This is a great staff. This is, you know, the board's been really receptive. So very, very pleased that it's been a collaborative effort all the, the entire way. It's gonna be a little painful as we go back, but it, we're gonna do it right.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Kashanian, do you have any questions for Dr. Bregge?
No questions. I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Bregge for all the countless hours, you know, it's not easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoni.
Remember, Margot?
No questions now. Thank you.
Remember, Walker Schuman? Oh, I skipped Mr. Spitz because you guys are all in different. Thank you.
No questions. Just thank you for the presentation and I'm very excited about the strategic plan and all of the forward plans. It's, I say it, I think every time, but it's a little bit like drinking from a fire hose. So thanks for keeping up to date with everything and keeping us all informed.
Thank you.
This is Marcus.
Thank you very much for that very inclusive and wonderful report. I hope that the parents can appreciate everything that we've done so far and how you are constantly like chasing the tail for the, the report for the situation with the COVID-19. It's just, it seems like you're running around in circles and it just never changes. You get to one spot and then something else again. I was just, I was kind of intrigued by this lunch program when it started. And how many, do we have any idea yet about people who've participated in it? I was just curious to know that. Have you any report on that yet?
I'll let Wade jump in with that. I think he might know.
So trustee Marcus, as of last week, we had increased from about 80 or so participants to over 260. It's amazing.
Oh, wow. You know, I'm hoping that with that and the fact that it's been so successful, that when the kids do come back to school, that this might have an impact on our lunch program and we might be better with our lunch programs in terms of the kids, et cetera. So I think that's amazing and I really appreciate that. And I was, it's so colorful, that poster and everything. I mean, it's very enticing and I like it. So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on. Dr. Bregge, I'd asked you if you could give, present a, a lot of phone calls came in in the last two weeks and emails about AB331. And so I reached out to Dr. Bregge and asked him if there was any movement or any changes to the curriculum since we last had this discussion or update to the board. And his response was, of course, let me look into it as well. And so thank you, Dr. Bregge, for preparing and for, you know, making this part of your update today. I think it's important to just inform the community of the correct information. And I think it's an opportunity also for the community. I mean, I, I listened very carefully to all the letters that came in on the issue. And so I think there's an opportunity here for all of us to learn together and also to be proactive. And I'll talk about that after, but I have some information that I've gathered just that I want to share with you, with the community as well. But Dr. Bregge, I defer to you, please, and I thank you again for, for making this part of your update to the board.
Sure. So I, I can be brief. This is, this is much like, you know, many assembly bills. And I, and I realize that we don't often get into, into the weeds with a lot of our assembly bills, but we do. You know, we look at them and, and things begin again to change. And then we look to see why and where things are. And then we start to see some of the amendments that are coming in. So this is one that has struggled, this requirement, graduation requirement of having an ethics class. And it has struggled. Governor Newsom did sign this for our universities. So our universities went through a similar process as far as the ethics class. And now it's at the high school level and, you know, there are a number of issues and problems with it. And it's great to hear from our community. I have had the opportunity last week to talk to a few of our parents that were concerned and had some really intelligent conversations about this curriculum. And, you know, some of the concerns that they had about our community. And I could not agree more that, you know, this is, this is kind of front and center as far as the next steps. There has been a, a high level of disagreement with this curriculum, which is why what's happening now are these amendments. And as you know, with many other assembly bills, some school districts will, will go ahead and just, you know, kind of approve their own thing and approve their own curriculum. And so that is starting to happen a little bit. But more districts in the state are really looking at it in, in trying to understand, you know, what is the actual content that's here? Because there has not been any agreement. They're working on another revision of what this content's going to be. And, and I think that it's going to be faced with a series of, you know, of opposition as it has been from the very beginning. You know, one of the amendments that is a possible one is, you know, setting kind of a framework for a curriculum, much like standards. And then having the community, having school districts then be able to, you know, take that and into, you know, still meet the integrity of the course and the standards, but be able to provide and design some lesson content around their own community. So that is kind of where we're at. There's no, there's been no final decision. They, they would like for this to begin with the class, I think it's the class of 2029. So they are right now looking at that this would be in place for the, when the class of 2025 starts high school, I believe. But as of right now, there is not a curriculum that I'm aware of that, that you can even view. Because a lot of people, and I tried to search, you know, a lot of the revisions of this have just been completely, you know, not accepted. And so, you know, it's kind of at a starting off point right now. And I think that, you know, I think that the state is on heightened alert that, that this is not an acceptable curriculum. And so we're just at a place right now where, you know, there are, some of our legislators are trying to make sense of it and trying to take the, the meaning behind the, the, the ethics lesson and make that part of the requirement. But there's been absolutely no agreement at all when it comes to the actual curriculum. So, you know, I, Mr. Seaman, if you have more information than I do, feel free to add. But it's right now, that's, you know, the state is aware of this. I don't think, there's been anything in my career where the state has been as alert to the, you know, the, the concerns. And, and I think that there are people at the highest state level that also share a lot of the same concerns. So we're watching it, we're watching it very closely. We're not going to allow something to be passed in the dead of the night. You know, Mr. Seaman has, has great contacts within his curriculum and instruction responsibilities, as well as I do, that, you know, we're staying on top of this. This is, we want to be fully engaged in what this turns out to be. This is not something that we're going to take laying down. It's not something that we're just going to accept and say, we have to, we will be right there every step of the way to ensure that, you know, our community, our school board, you know, that, that this is a solid curriculum that we can stand behind.
So thank you. And along those lines, I just, I thank you so much, Dr. Bregge, once again, for, for just doing your homework and, and bringing us the, the most up-to-date news about AB331. And I, I thought it was important to really bring it up to the board and just to have this discussion so that parents watching or anybody interested, any resident, resident will understand that, you know, this is not a done deal, as you have said. And just, I also wanted the community to know, just before I go around the horseshoe, that, you know, at this very present moment, they're allowing comments to be, to be submitted to the Ethic Studies Committee. And so all of your letters, all the letters that were read into the public today, into, into the record today should really be considered and sent over. I would really advise and recommend that parents who wrote in, send your letters to ethnicstudies@cde.ca.gov. They are still collecting comments at this moment. And they're taking all of your, your, you know, they're, they're collecting input and they're taking that into account. I reached out to Senator Ben Allen, who I understand is the chair of a Jewish caucus who has been at the, at the head of making sure that, you know, they're, they're safeguarding any language and protecting the curriculum, the integrity of the curriculum, to make sure that there isn't a flare of antisemitism. And they recently, his office, he's also chairing that with another, with Jesse Gabriel of Encino, Assembly Member Jesse Gabriel of Encino. And they had a statement, they had a joint statement just posted, I think, on August 20th, where it said that, quote, "We are pleased that AB331 now includes firm guardrails that will prohibit the teaching of any curriculum that promotes bias, bigotry, or discrimination, including against Jews or Israelis." So that was a joint statement from, again, Senator Ben Allen of Santa Monica and Assembly Member Jesse Gabriel of Encino. So I haven't, we haven't connected yet, but I wanted just to have his input. But he's another resource for our community, you know, to reach out to and to make sure that your comments are known, made known to him as he can fully represent us in the best, in the best way in his capacity on this very important issue. And so as one board member, I, I completely understand and I'm in sync 100% with the concerns shared with us tonight. You know, my husband's, one of his parents was a Holocaust survivor. So for sure, this hits home very directly at our, you know, to the heart of who we are in, in, in our family. And so, you know, I, I completely, I'm sensitive to the concerns shared with us tonight. So with that being said, and Dr. Bregge, I'm wondering if we could post that website or the email that I just read into the minutes? And maybe we can post that for our community on the website as a resource to direct their, their comments? Because I think it's an opportunity for us to be proactive and there's still time to get our comments submitted, you know, where, where it matters most. So with that being said, let's go on to Board Member, Student Board Member Kashanian.
Oh, thank you. I just, I'd like to say that it honestly saddens me that there's antisemitism trying to be taught to students and be put into their curriculum. I think honestly, our only action against that is just being proactive, as Mrs. President Hacker said, and just emailing that email and getting our voices heard. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kashanian. Mr. Mark?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I went and looked up the language of the bill. First of all, I want to say for the record that as a board member, for those parents that are concerned, I will in no way ever support adding a curriculum or aspects of a curriculum that support anything antisemitic or anything racist for that matter. I know how it's hurt some members of our community because of the specific arrow ahead on this, on this one. But I think that it's important to know that your board members are not going to propagate anything that will include antisemitism. Why, why would anybody do that? Especially because we have what's called separation of church and state. And we shouldn't even be touching anything religiously oriented on a public school campus. That's, that's the protection of, of everybody by doing that. I did want to point out that some of the language that I found interesting and I, and, and I think it's, it's relevant to this conversation is, one, instruction and materials for the course shall be appropriate for all races, religions, genders, sexual orientation, and diverse ethnic and cultural backgrounds, pupils with disabilities, and English learners. I think that covers just about everybody. So that's the first thing. And, and by the way, I want to also reiterate, it's ethnic, it's ethnic studies, not ethics studies. It's, that's not ethics, it's ethnic. And also, the curriculum cannot reflect or promote directly or indirectly any bias, bigotry, or discrimination against anyone. So this is just the general language before, as, as Mrs. Hacker said, the Jewish caucus put in the other safeguards for antisemitism. So it also, it says it cannot also, cannot teach or promote religious doctrine as well. So it's, it's, you know, as if kids didn't have to learn enough. I, I think it's important to incorporate ideas of, of culture and ethnicity into our curriculum. But news flash, if anybody has a recent middle schooler, you'll know that their, your sixth grade history books are chock full of studies about cultures and ethnicities from all over the world. So it's already in there. So I'm curious to know how this stuff will be incorporated in the future. It's, it's not a discussion for tonight by any means because the final bill hasn't been passed. But it's curious why the state legislature and the, and the California Department of Education hasn't really looked at what's existing already and see if it's just something that needs to be augmented as opposed to making an entire new course. Because you can do that. You can change the standards within an existing course without adding another course. So I think that's something they should consider as well. But it, it is important for people to understand what's out in the world. It's just, it's just a matter of educating people of what exists. It's not, it's not about setting up an opinion one way or the other. See, that's, that's where the divide is. And I think that's where a lot of anger is in the community. We would protect as board members, we would protect our district and make sure that the information, if eventually required to be part of the curriculum, that information is, is as any other information that we try to expose our students to, right? It's whether it's something new from science or some, this is something new in culture. So that's what we're adding to the curriculum. So I think from, from, from a teacher hat standpoint, it's, it's, it can be practical, as long as people don't get carried away and misread into this too much. And that's important eventually for our, our, myself and our colleagues to do is to protect our community and our school district, making sure it's the right curriculum for, for, for the students. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you for bringing it up, Dr. Bregy. Thank you, colleagues, for my little mini rant there. I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz.
You know, this latest bill, AB 331, this is the second time around. I think most people know. A couple of years ago, there was the initial effort at this, at this kind of recourse requirement. And at that time, I had studied every word carefully of, of that, that initial stab. And it started with all of the general, generalities, the nice generalities that Mr. Margot described or, or stated. And then I can tell you that there was plenty of specific antisemitic and anti-Israel data, information in it. It was disgusting. And I, I wrote to a number of people and did what I could to derail it. And it, it's a great concern to me that anything like this could be put into law and that we would have a, a big battle on our hands not to, not to put this, this kind of, 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 of a course into our curriculum. So you know, it would seem appropriate to me if the board was in favor of it to issue a resolution opposing any course requirement that contains antisemitic and anti-Israel material. But any such resolution should identify but word for word such contact. Because I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather, I'd rather step forward and oppose it before it comes law than to have to deal with it when it's shoved down our throats. Thank you.
Very well said, Mr. Spitz. Mrs. Walker-Schuman.
Thank you. So I like to get into the details, and I think it's really important because I feel like there's some misunderstanding in, in the community and about how this whole process works. So just for the sake of clarity, the legislature wrote and passed this. This was not something that the school board or school district writes. It happens at the state level, and I agree entirely with what my colleagues to my right have already said. We're all aware of how awful that curriculum that was written several years ago was. Just to pick up where Mr. Spitz left off, since I think it's topical, the next thing that we're going to be discussing after the Student Board Member Report is the resolution that the City of Beverly Hills adopted on antisemitism. And one of the bullet points, it says that, that we condemn the California Department of Education for the then-current draft curriculum of the ethnic studies models, as it demonstrated a clear anti-Jewish bias that was antisemitic. So the resolution that we're going to be talking about next actually has that language in it. And I, and I agree with you, Mr. Spitz, that we need to put that out there. But just for the sake of the parents watching, the legislature creates the requirement for graduation. That's what the bill says. It doesn't actually contain curriculum. It sets some guidelines and standards. None of them mention Israel, none of them mention Palestine, none of them mention antisemitic anything. The Jewish caucus did, did get involved, as, as President Hacker was saying, and they were able to set up these guidelines, these guardrails against antisemitism being represented. And, and the three items that Mr. Margot mentioned were actually those guidelines. The first one is be appropriate for use with pupils of all races, religions, genders, sexual orientations, and diverse ethnic and cultural backgrounds, pupils with disabilities, and English learners. That was the first one. The second was not to teach or promote religious doctrine. And the third was not to reflect or promote directly or indirectly any bias, bigotry, or discrimination against any person or group of persons on the basis of any category protected in Section 220. Section 220 is the penal code for hate crime. So all protected parties are, are in that definition. So I think those are really important things to recognize. The California Department of Education is the entity that, that goes through the process of setting the curriculum and, and negotiating that and deciding that and hearing comments about it. And they actually have put out some drafts, and they have received public comments, and they have made some changes, which is helpful, and that is on the website. But, you know, these things are so complicated and voluminous, it's sometimes very hard to find and to decipher. But for the sake of, for the sake of this conversation, it is there if anyone wants to go and look at it. So at the point that they decide whether to go ahead and approve curriculum or not, we still have some recourse. And this is a really, really important piece, and I don't think it, it should be lost. Within AB 331, there are four different ways that this graduation requirement can be satisfied. One is with a course based on the model curriculum developed pursuant to Section 51226.7. The second one is an existing ethnic studies course. The third is an ethnic studies course that's taught as part of a course that has been approved as meeting A through G requirements for the UC and Cal State schools. The fourth one is the most important piece, and that says the, a locally-developed ethnic studies course approved by the governing board of the school district or the governing body of the charter school. What that means is that regardless of what the state agrees to in the curriculum, we still retain the power of developing our own curriculum that reflects our community values. We don't have to be subject to what they agree to. And I think this is the really important piece that we need to pay attention to. We don't have to riot. We don't have to, I mean, letters are good. I think it's important for people up in Sacramento to know. But we don't have to abide by a curriculum that has antisemitic content. We can develop our own, and that, I think, is actually the path that we ought to go down, because that safeguards us from having the influence of any other part of the state of California whose values don't align with ours. So I think that's really important, and I hope everyone will watch this and, and, and take this with some assurances. Nobody wants to bring antisemitic curriculum to Beverly Hills. Those don't align with our values. None of us board members have expressed wanting that to be represented in what we bring to our campus and to our children. And maybe it's inappropriate to say, I, I'm going to just speak for myself instead of the whole board, but I'm a Jewish woman. I have a Jewish family. I'm married to a Jewish man. I would never in a million years be okay bringing curriculum that would be damaging to the Jewish people. I agree that church and state need to be separated. I think it's important to learn history, but I'm not about to bring something damaging to our community. So I just, I want, I understand there's a lot of fear and a lot of emotion around this topic, and I really hope that people will, will listen to this detail and will have some of their concerns at least allayed. Regardless of what it is that happens with this graduation requirement, we still have control over developing the curriculum that's brought to our school district. So I'll leave it there.
This is Mark.
Oh, again, I get to go forth. Tristan, I want to thank you for those comments. Number one, I had those very four points to talk about, because I also felt that AB 331 can get passed, and that means there has to be an ethnic study. But it doesn't say what that curriculum has to be. It is one that we can develop ourselves. And so I think that that is something that we as a community have to look at. And I, I, I'm just going to share a little story about my background. I come from a very big city in Minneapolis originally, but I was raised where we were the only Jewish family. I was the only Jewish child in a, in the elementary school. Nobody else, just me. And believe you me, that school could have used a little bit of education about the Jews, because, trust me, I felt it for a long time. So nothing can be more important than, to me, as a Jew growing up in a John Jewish community. Just to share one little anecdote, my parents wanted to buy a house in a community called Edina, Minnesota. They were not allowed to. They were told they couldn't buy the house there. So nobody can know more about antisemitism in a very lightweight than I think I am. So I, I would like to just iterate that my concern is that we have a chance here to be ahead of the game. We have a chance to write the program, write the curriculum, get it into what meets our needs in our community, which is what was said before me. I hate to be redundant. I don't like to be redundant. But everything that was said is very true to the way I feel. So I applaud all the people who spoke before me for their comments, for taking the words out of my mouth, and I thank you. And I will now pass the part to President Hacker.
Yes, I think that fourth statement, many of my Mrs. Walker-Schuman, really basically conveys the responsibility and the oversight that this board exercises in governing the school board. And I think it should also always represent the values and, and that the, that the, that the community carries. And I think all of us are, you know, have expressed our sensitivity and our wish to safeguard the principles that, that we all live by. And that is, we, I think we're all not friends of any flare of antisemitism and also any, any, anything that has to do with being unethical or, you know, just even not promoting diversity in our community and just really respecting all the groups that deserve to be protected. And I think that's just the entire human race. So and I think that we should be cognizant of that always, and I think we are. So and along those lines, I'd like to make sure that, again, that information, Mrs. Starkins, gets out to the community. I also believe that the bill, let's see, is, or the curriculum can be accessed on the CDE website. So if anybody wants to see the curriculum that is being proposed as we speak, it's there. And most importantly, again, I just, I just really want parents to understand that this is your opportunity to be proactive, you know, by sending your comments to the CDE, and that email will also be put up. So if you wrote a letter tonight, consider sending that letter either to Senator Ben Allen, expressing your thoughts, your concerns, and then furthermore, send it please to the ethnic studies committee. And as I said, Mrs. Starkins will have that information ready for us. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bregy.
Thank you.
Um, let's see here. The next thing is, of course, very important, Student Board Member Report from Mr. Kashanian.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In the past two weeks, I've been hearing much of the same concern from students about screen time. Many students can't stand the long hours they have been on their devices for. Most students are advocating for the idea of making Wednesdays into office hours. However, I've also heard from a few students that by doing this, we will only make it harder to stay up to date on curriculum, since we are already moving slow as it is. I'm sure we can come to some sort of compromise so that teachers, students, and parents are satisfied. Maybe we could reduce the minutes in each class or maybe making Wednesdays. I'm sorry. Maybe we can reduce the minutes in each class instead of getting rid of Wednesdays, but maybe making Wednesdays into office hours is a better idea, because that way students can voice their concerns and have some time to get their questions answered, since some teachers don't have the time to stop their lessons for questions. Either way, I think the topic should be further examined so that we can make a sophisticated decision for our district. Other than this, classes have been running smoothly and everything seems under control.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kashanian, for that report. Any questions or comments for Mr. Kashanian? So I do have a question. Dr. Bregy, we did receive several emails in the last two weeks from students, as you know, and I'm just, I'm just making sure that, you know, I just, are we, are we, how are we going about, where did this idea or concept come from? Because I think was this just from a student-led idea, or I don't think that we've ever entertained this concept?
So just, just the, the sheer notion of office hours was, that came from some of the terminology that we used in Home Learning Plan 2.0, was that we designated some of that time as, as, you know, office hours. I mean, it's not something that, you know, is typically in our vernacular that sometimes at the university level that's used when you want to meet with your professor. But there is an understanding that, you know, that teachers are available in a variety of ways, you know, before and after classes, during classes. I think that, you know, the more that I hear this and the more that I talk with principals, is, is, I, I do think that our staff is doing a phenomenal job. I mean, this is above and beyond what we could have ever expected. And so, but I think that it's also, you know, a period of time too where, you know, we can't lose the, the essence of, of what we discussed and collaborated with our teachers. And that is, you know, the most important thing from this experience is to, you know, mimic as much as possible what happens in the classroom. And so I kind of begin and end with that, because it is, you know, when you think about what, you know, you being in a classroom, you know, our teachers in a classroom, it is not just about screen time. There are a number of things that, you know, again, think about what happens. And as a teacher, I didn't, I didn't talk to my students for, you know, 90 minutes, and I didn't lecture for 90 minutes. And I didn't have them staring into, you know, if this was a COVID, don't look into the computer for 90 minutes. But if you were to peek into my classroom, you would see a very active and engaged classroom, and you would see me as teacher, you know, looking, meeting with people in groups and, you know, and pulling people away, you know, from listening to, you know, me talk the entire time. And so I think that, you know, our, and I appreciate that, you know, our, our teachers are, you know, really serious about providing the very best education. And so, and, and they are living up to our MOU, and which is fantastic. I think that as time goes on, it's, you know, still living up to our MOU is, is also just realizing that there's things that a teacher can do within their classroom. And I think that everyone's becoming more and more comfortable, because I'm seeing and hearing more things that are happening, you know, through Zoom. But also that time where, as, as a teacher, the other thing that we wanted that was really important was that the teacher was, you know, accessible and, and, and visible, being there, being, being accessible and, and, and knowing that you're going to be putting in people into groups. You may be working with a small group of five while classmates are doing something else. And it could be that they're reading in their textbook. It could be that they are with, having a discussion with somebody else. There's a variety of things that can happen. If you think about what happens in those four walls, and it's getting creative again, so that, that, that a student doesn't have to be staring into the screen the entire time. But the teacher is still accessible and, and still running the class. But there are things that, that can happen within, just like it would in a regular classroom, where students are working with one another, or that they're doing some independent, you know, maybe they're writing, you know, and not looking at the computer. It's just, there's a variety of things. It depends on some subject areas are a little tougher than others, but I think it's, you know, teachers are starting to get more creative about how they use that. I think that our teachers do listen to our students. And I know that our students are, many of our students are, are reaching out and sharing. You know, this is too much. We need a break. Can we do something else? And I know that our teachers are being responsive. And our teachers are also living up to the MOU that we put into place. And I think that there's a, there's an in-between here. And it is actually, you know, doing the things that we agreed upon, which would be in the best interest of instruction, while still doing some things within that class period that allows some freedom from our students so that they're not staring at the screen the entire time. So I think we're starting to move in that direction. I think that, that teachers I think that teachers understand that they have this freedom to still be accessible, still be, this is my classroom, you know, but to still look at what happens in the classroom, because I don't know a teacher in our district that is, you know, expecting people to listen to a lecture for, you know, 90 minutes straight. So, I mean, students are doing a good job of saying, look, you gotta hear my voice. You gotta understand, this is killing my eyes, I'm actually losing, you know, I really think that our teachers are starting, and many have been, as they're trying to find their way here, be really receptive to that. So, we will continue, as administration, work with our teachers, and, you know, we're not trying to look at, you know, some sort of punitive, we're trying to find where is that balance between providing what our teachers need to provide, but in a way that our students are feeling comfortable and not, you know, too stressed that looking at a screen the entire time.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. I think it was important to acknowledge that for our students who have been writing, and I think we're not ignoring you, we hear you, but as Dr. Bregge just explained, we're trying to achieve so many things in this, in this, in this time of great challenge, so we're all being challenged in different ways, but we are listening and we're taking notice, and we're not ignoring anyone. Okay? Thank you for that. Any questions for Mr. Krishaney before we move on? I hear somebody. This is Walker.
Yeah. So, I had the opportunity to speak with a optometrist, a pediatric optometrist, a couple of weeks ago. He's a resident here in Beverly Hills, has a place on Robertson, and he actually had given a whole bunch of really good advice for our students for their eye health. And so, I don't actually really have a proposal, but it may be worthwhile to look at some of the suggestions he made in terms of blue light glasses, like what I'm wearing, for our students that are on computers all day long, because the blue light can be damaging for their eyes. And there were some things that he said about taking a break every 20 minutes and looking at least 20 feet away, so your eyes can adjust, instead of having, you know, instead of to the screen right in front of you, to a little distance. I don't want to presume to know everything he's going to say, or be able to, you know, parrot any of that, but it may be worthwhile to look at some of those things and see if we can't support our teachers in incorporating some of those things into the classrooms. Just a thought, to make it easier for the kids.
Thank you. Mr. Krishaney, any comments?
Yeah, I'd actually like to add about that, the blue light glasses are definitely helpful. I know on, right around Hamilton and Los Yenega, Dr. Newman Optometry, they're giving 50% off to all BHYS students for the glasses. So, that's helpful.
He's my neighbor.
Also, some laptops or devices have a night shift mode, which gets rid of, like, some of the blue light, so that could help. And I've heard about the 20-feet thing every 20 minutes, so, yeah, that could help too.
Thank you for that. Okay, so we're gonna move. Any other further comments before we leave this? Dr. Bregge, thank you so much for all of your work on the superintendent's update. I think that this is the heart of our meeting, and so, we so appreciate you doing this for us. I can't express that enough.
Thank you.
Yes, you're so welcome. Okay, so I will move to approve the 2019-20 unaudited actuals. May I please have a second? Okay. Mrs. Walker Schuman, I think that belongs to her. Pam, I think that was her, for the record. Okay, Wade, I know you are staying up late to tell us some very fantastic news.
So, President Hacker, as Ms. Starkins pulls up the report, I just want to echo what Dr. Bregge said about the Food Service Department, and what a great job they're doing. Most people don't know, they've been working since April, throughout the whole summer. So, shout out to Heather and her team, they're doing a great job. A shout out to Ms. Starkins, her promotional materials were great for this new promotion, and also a shout out to the city of Beverly Hills for cross-promoting the new food service plan, so thank you to all of those folks. So, this is my most favorite report that I give to the board. Next slide. The unaudited actuals is a report of actuals, it's not projections, it's not budget. It's actually an accounting report, where I look at actual revenues and accounts receivable, I look at actual expenses and accounts payable. So, if you're an accountant or a junior accountant, this is the kind of report you love. And this report becomes the basis of our audit, that we have our independent audit each year. So, this is my favorite report, and we send it to the county Laco by September 15th each year. So, next slide. I want to give the board some trends and data points. Next slide. As we look at enrollment over the last five years, you can see from this chart, last year, 1920, our actual SEbeds enrollment in October was 3,504, and our current estimate, and it's just an estimate for the current year, because things are still shifting, is about 3,361 students. Next slide. Over the last several years, our property tax revenue has been increasing in the tune of 5% to 6% a year. So, you can see that property tax revenue there increasing, which is a great thing. Next slide. So, our biggest asset as a school district is, of course, our employees. So, you can see our employee salaries have increased over the last several years, and this is based on the contract that we negotiated with our employees. So, you can see that increase there. Next slide. This is a report of our full-time equivalent FTE employees in the general fund. So, what you have on this report are the FTEs in 1819, and then last year, 1920, and the current FTEs in 2021. So, first line, you have the total unrestricted general fund FTEs. You can see that that count is 334.66 in the current year, down 11.46 FTE from last year. Restricted general fund FTEs is up slightly, 2.10. And total general fund FTEs is down from last year by just over 9 FTE. So, when we look just at our teachers, which is our biggest group of employees, unrestricted general fund FTEs are down 9.81, and that's a reflection of actually having fewer students. So, if you remember back in the spring, we had some layoffs based on a projected lower enrollment. So, that's what you see there. But under restricted, you'll see an increase, and that's a couple of things, but most of that are the one-time staffing FTEs based on the COVID intervention program. So, a lot of those general fund, restricted general fund FTEs are actually the one-time COVID-funded teachers. And then, looking at our total general fund teachers, there's an increase of just under 4 FTE from last year, but there are big decreases if you compare it to 1819. Next slide. So, when you look at all of our general fund expenditures per student, you can see on this slide, the blue column is Beverly Hills, our general fund expenditures per student, and the green column is the statewide average. So, I don't have the statewide average yet for last year, 1920, but for us, Beverly Hills, we spent approximately $22,800 per student. In 1819, you can see that we spent $19,700 or so. The statewide average was about $13,600. So, on average, over the last two or three years, we've spent about $6,000 more per student than the statewide average. And we're able to do that because we are funded by our local property taxes, and we're lucky because of that. Next slide. So, if we look at the general fund, next slide. These are numbers that the board saw at the last board meeting. You can look at the 1920 unaudited actuals column in the middle there, when you look at, the beginning balance was about 9.1 million. We had our revenues, property tax, state aid, all other state revenue, federal revenue, total general fund revenue about $79.8 million. That was an increase from the prior year of about 9%, or about $6.6 million. Next slide. On the expenditure side, our greatest expenditures, as I mentioned earlier, are our employees, so the biggest category, of course, is salaries and employee benefits. Salary is 44.2 million. Employee benefits, about 21 million. And we have supplies, services, transfers to other funds, so total expenses about $77 million, which was an increase from the prior year of about 7.7%. So, our revenues went up by 9%, our expenditures went up by about 7.7%. So, we had an increase in our operational surplus to about 2.3 million. And our ending fund balance went from prior year of about 9.1 million to the current year of about 11.4 million, which is an increase of about 25.9% increase. Next slide. So, you can see here, just another representation of our general fund ending fund balance. You can see between 15, 16, and 17, 18 is pretty flat in those years, but in 1819 and 1920, we had some fairly substantial increases. Next slide. And with those increased ending fund balances, we've been able to put aside some additional money into the reserve, and that Fund 17 reserve is now about $10.8 million. Next slide. And as we assign the ending fund balance reserves, you can see here that $16.3 million is equivalent to the board policy of a 20% reserve. We are recommending to the board, as they approve the unaudited actuals, that we set aside just over $4 million as a contingency for lower property taxes based on the economic situation of the state and the COVID impact. And we're also recommending to the board that we set aside just over $800,000 for additional COVID expenditures in the fall and the spring. So, this is our recommendation to the board for setting aside our reserves and assignments. Next slide. And very quickly, next slide, we'll go through the other funds. Our cafeteria and food services fund, we had $714,000 in revenue last year, our expenditures were just over a million. So, we needed to make a contribution to keep the fund balanced of about $357,000 from the general fund. And that's one of the things we talked about earlier, we're hoping that as our food service program gets more publicity, more people participate, we'll be able to drop that food service contribution. Next slide. Here is our special reserve fund, Fund 17, we're just speaking of, $181,582 you see there, that's just the interest income in Fund 17. The rest of the reserve and assignment is actually in Fund 1. Next slide. Fund 21 is all of our bond funds, both Measure E and Measure BH. You can see that we started off with a fund balance of a little over $295 million. The revenue there, 4.4 million, that's interest earned on the bond funds. On our construction projects, we spent a little over $89 million, leaving us with a fund balance of $210.7 million. Next slide. Developer fees, we collect based on residential and commercial development in the city of Beverly Hills. We started with a fund balance of about $5.8 million, we collected $1.3 million. We expended $2.3 million last year, we have an ending fund balance of about $4.8 million. Okay, next slide. School facilities, state school facilities, we received some seismic money from the state of California for projects at both Horst Man and B1, B2. So, we received the money and we expended all the money last year. We have just a tiny little balance in the account right now. Next slide. Fund 51, bond interest and redemption. We don't actively manage these funds, they're managed by the county treasurer. These are property taxes collected and then used to pay for our bond redemption, as we pay back our general obligation bonds. Next slide. Self-insurance fund, this is a fund we use to fund and pay out self-insurance for vision and dental programs and life insurance. So, this fund is just an in and an out. Next slide. And finally, Fund 71 is our OPEB fund, this is where we contribute to our future medical benefit costs. And you can see we made great strides in contributing our 2% every year, so that fund balance now is over $3.6 million, well on the way of being fully funded. So, we're gonna ask the board tonight to approve the unaudited actuals, we're gonna present this to the auditors. Los Angeles County Austin Education will get our unaudited actuals, hopefully they'll approve our adopted budget fairly soon. And then, next month, we're gonna bring a draft version of the first engine report with all the changes that have happened since we started school. So, any questions that the board may have?
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Roach. We're gonna go around, we'll start with Student Board Member, Mr. Krishaney. Do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Margot.
Thank you, Wade, for the report, and I love a sonnyer outlook. I think we definitely, as a board, should be moving cautiously through the next year. It's kind of a, like you mentioned at the last meeting, the numbers also reflect a dip in expenditures due to the closing of campuses this past year, and I think people have to remember that when our campuses reopen, those expenditures are gonna rocket up again. So, we have to be very cautious in our budgeting for the future, but I'm very optimistic about the direction we're headed. I'm thrilled about pre-funding the OPEB, this has been something that we've been doing for years. Wade, just for a point of information, when you say we are on our way to being fully funded, what does that number look like?
So, we expect if we continue with a 2% funding, depending on the market conditions, we would be there in in probably eight to 12 years, depending on the market. So, I mean, and in the fiscal terms, that's a very short time.
Yeah, I mean, we've gotten to the point where we've had this pattern in the past 10 years, you know, nine years that I've been around. We, it looks bleak, and then money comes in at the end, because it's not spent. You know, it comes off of the POs wherever it comes, and then all of a sudden, we have a little extra. So, we're able to move forward, put a little sock in a drawer and keep going. So, I'm glad that this, the practice has proved to be effective of what we've done as a board moving forward. I really am excited about that we have a deferred maintenance line item now. We've so far retained our OPEB pre-funding line item, so these are important things. They're not the exciting sexy things, but they're the important things to maintain stability in the long run. Because when buildings go offline and systems fail, and it costs us more and more, and then you have to displace students, none of that is a good thing. So, by using this unfortunate pandemic to actually get ahead on some deferred maintenance issues and continue to pre-fund, I think we're hitting all the ride markers here, so thank you for leading the charge on all of that. So, I'm good. Thanks.
Mr. Spitz.
Oh. Well, I do believe that this unaudited annual financial report is the first one in many years that it shows an operating surplus. And that means operating revenue exceeds operating expenditures, so it's, there's, it has been a great turnaround, in my opinion. I don't think this turnaround could have happened without eliminating the formula that tied salaries to property tax revenues and reconfiguring from four under-enrolled middle schools. So, I think the board and staff should take pride in past efforts that have brought about what is a sustainable financial condition. And I do support Mr. Roach's recommendation that we set aside a significant amount of for future reductions in in property tax revenue. I think that that is a step that is parallel, pretty much parallel to increasing increasing our reserves, our reserve requirement. increasing our reserves, our reserve requirement, um, which is currently twenty percent uh of budget, annual budget. Uh, and uh, and I do believe that most experts say that the uh the reserves for any um districts such as ours, um, basic aid district, it should be at least twenty five percent. So uh, I think what 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 you are recommending is akin to that, and I'm all for it. So um, and and thanks for this uh easy to understand uh presentation. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Spitz. Um, Mrs. Walker.
Thanks. Um, I I agree um with everything so far that's been said. Um, it gives me great um confidence to see this, to see this report and and how, you know, the that we've shifted so far from where we were before, where we weren't sure if we were gonna have to dip into reserves to um knowing that we can cover our expenses, I think it's really important. Um, I too am nervous about um next year and the impact that uh our property tax revenue is gonna make on our overall budget. Um, I think it's good to be conservative and to keep some money set aside. Um, I am inclined to take um Mr. Spitz's recommendation, and I think it also was the finance committee's recommendation to increase the um the amount that we keep in reserves to twenty five percent. So I think that's something maybe we should talk a little bit more about. Um, but I'm very happy with where we are right now. I think it's a result of some um difficult but really good and effective planning and execution. Um, and so uh, I'm very happy to um to have this report. Mr. Roach, thank you very much. I do have one really quick question, because it wasn't really a line item thing, but I think a lot of people are interested. I've heard people ask about this. The COVID funds that we received, have there, have there been more COVID relief funds from the original set of the care, of the CARES Act that were allocated to us? And I know some of them had to be allocated to private school too, but um in that package that we got to cover COVID-related expenses, has there been additional funds?
Uh, no, there have not been. The the original two point four million is all we've received, uh, all we've been allocated today. We have not received all those funds yet, but that's all we've been allocated.
Okay, so that's good to know, but we are putting aside um eight hundred, a little over eight hundred thousand out of our surplus uh to make sure that we can cover all of the COVID-related expenses that we anticipate for for the second half of the year.
Correct, if that's, if the board approves the audit actials tonight, that's what we'll do.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus.
Uh, just a couple of questions and then a couple of comment, comment. Um, uh, the developer fees that we show on there, is there a time limit that they can be kept before they are used? Or do we have to uh, and how can they be, can we start to think about this? Is there any way we can use those now with the COVID type of the situation that we're in?
Uh, trustee Marcus, developer fees are really um legally required to be used for expansion of program, our continuation of existing program. Uh, legally, we would probably be a stretch to try to use them for some COVID expenses. So they're they're really focused on uh program expansion, uh, construction programs, things like that.
Okay, well, I would just like to say that uh after a full year of being on the board, I finally understand the uh, by the budget, which I probably never did before I came on, only because it was so confusing, that I I'm so grateful for your presentation. I'd also like to talk about the fact that I think we were very prudent in the use of our money this year, this past year nineteen twenty, which I think is a reflection of the fact that we did come out with some money ahead. I'd also like to mention though, that what we, where would we have been without the JPA? I mean, we must remember that the JPA and the people that that even though it's going forward now, thanks to the wonderful committee, that and I'm looking at some of the people that were instrumental in making sure that we got it again, Mr. Ellis and Mr. Roach, and some, and Mrs. Hacker, and um, Mr. Greg, Dr. Breggy, um, that this was, I died away, I hope I didn't leave anybody out. Doc, not hope so, on this year's, Mel was there.
Mel was there a little bit at the beginning, and then he so graciously said, you take over, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, anyway, I I just wanna point that out, that I don't know where we'd be without that JPA. That is really an amazing thing for us. And I'm hoping that, I know that we're going to probably feel some problems with the nineteen twenty twenty one. I'm looking forward to the report that we're gonna get in October, I believe. And I hope it will be a, I tell you, I don't wanna be negative, I hope it'll be a good one at least. And um, um, so I hopeful that we can keep up with the OPEB, uh, OPEB. I'm hoping that we can keep up with that and the ability to make our uh general funded the uh balance and increase again, so that we have more in reserve. I look forward to that. So I'm gonna compliment you again on a very clear, concise report, and thank you.
Yeah, so thank you, Mrs. Marcus, for that. All I will say is that it's really nice to hear in your presentation, Mr. Roach, that the deferred maintenance line item is back um as part of our budget. It had always been part of our budget, but as I said, I think once before, I remember when I just became a parent in the district, and I want to say it was around two thousand, maybe eight or seven, that that line item was basically eliminated as part of the operation of the district or the budget. And um, it's just really nice to see that that heavy lifting has now um been taken and and that we are on the path to making sure that we take care of our facilities as they should be taken care of. And I think that going forward, that should never be a mistake that the board does going forward. It should always be part of our, any healthy institution, always make sure that deferred maintenance is part of something that they invest in, because it winds up costing more money if you don't. So I'm very pleased to see that. As far as OPEB, I remember uh five years ago, I think that that was the first time the money had been set aside and it actually, the board moved forward with um making investments in that, in that way. And I thought that that was very uh creative um thinking to solving the problems um had had that, had the board not taken the right step to do that. And it's been nice to see um a continuum of that path in the last five years. And I think um it's very um, it's 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 good news to hear that that will probably take eight years to to finalize. So um, that's more good news for the district. Um, the elimination of the salary formula, I thought was really, um, as Mr. Spitz says, really contributes to the healthy financial path that we see before us. And um, I'm so um glad that we were able to to find a solution to that, but that was a considerable heavy lift um on on behalf of the board and also the reconfiguration. Again, you know, uh, all of these things together is what has made um all of these things um possible. And I'm just so pleased that you are at the helm of leading our financial services um department, uh, Mr. Roach. I think that you've been a wonderful addition to our staff, I can't say that enough. And uh, we are in good hands with you, so thank you so much for representing us always.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, may I, um, we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, that's five zero, and that motion passes. Uh, we're gonna move on. I will make a motion to approve the amendment number five to the agreement by and between the city of Beverly Hills ARB and the Beverly Hills Unified School District in operation and abandonment services of oil and gas wells at nine eight six five Olympic Boulevard within the city of Beverly Hills. May I please have a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, who was that?
A second, Kristen.
Okay, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Thank you. Any questions or concerns?
I just uh.
Margot.
Yeah, I just wanted to, once again, thank the uh city of Beverly Hills for partnering, partnering with us on this massive project. Um, it's uh, it's appreciated and it's actually helped bring us closer. So it, through all that, it actually really had an effect on building relationships, so, which disaster usually does. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for that, anybody else? Go forward, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Okay, Mrs. Hacker, I will move for the approval of the Employee Injury and Illness Prevention Program.
A second.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that's five zero, thank you, that carries. Now we get to planning and facilities. Um, I'll make a motion for the acceptance. Wait, are we voting on this? We are, right? We are, okay, so um, I make a motion for the acceptance as complete Beverly Vista, Beverly Vista Middle School Fiber Backbone Replacement performed by Vector Resources Incorporated, doing business as Vector USA and authorization to file a notice of completion and release of retention. May I please have a second?
Thank you.
Was that you?
I think.
Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, aye, that's five zero, thank you, that passes. May I make, may I please have a motion for the next item on the agenda?
I'll move acceptance as complete telecommunications single mode fiber installation performed by AAA Network Solutions at the Beverly Hills High School and authorization of filing of a notice of completion and release of retention.
I I moved, I'll second that. Um, any questions? Mr. Blake is still with us, are you guys sure, no questions? Okay, all those in favor. Aye, okay, that carries five zero.
Mrs. Hacker, I will move for the ratification of amendment number two to the agreement for the seismic mitigation eligibility assessment with DLR group.
I'll second.
Thank you, yes, um, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Walker Schuman. Uh, Mr. Mr. Blake, did you wanna have any comments here? This is quite important, I think.
This is the portion that uh DLR provides for Mr. Bill Savage, who's um going after the money for us in Sacramento. And I believe the numbers are at the moment, nineteen million has been brought in, and I believe there's another six million out ahead of us to capture. And that's what, th- this is for the six million out ahead of us.
Thank you for that, that's wonderful news. Um, thank you for sharing, that's very important to share good news, right? Not always bad news, it's good news. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes five zero, thank you, Mr. Blake.
All right, Mrs. Hacker, I'll prove the agreement with WZI Incorporated for support services for the final well plugging on the former Venico drill site.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, I think I beat you, but I'll give it away.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's okay, no, no, it's okay, you can have it. I'd like to share, okay, so let's go, um, any questions from the board on this? No? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
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 Okay, passes five zero. Okay, I'll make a uh motion to ratify the agreement with Edgar Garza Construction.
We have to do E.
Wait, did I, um, can you do that one, cuz my um.
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve amendment number two to the agreement with professional services with K twelve school facilities.
Thank you. Sometimes my, okay, so any questions for Mr. Blake? No, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it passes five zero. So now I will move to ratify um agreement with Edgar Garza, Garza Construction to perform installation of portable rocks and writing board removal and installation at Alredale School for the relocate relocation of maintenance and operations workspace. My screen is freezing here. Second, thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman, all those. The, those in favor.
No, I haven't.
Do you have a question, Mrs. Marcus, please?
Um, uh, I'm I'm trying to recall because I don't have this on the sheet. Uh, was this the one where there was more than one bit on it, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Uh, Ms. Marcus Schuman, do you have a question? I saw your hand go.
I was just voting.
Okay, okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, next on the agenda, please.
We've ratification of an agreement with Edgar Garza Construction for Beverly Vista School Island Demo and Asphalt Work.
Okay, great, I'll second. Okay, all those in favor, any questions? Okay, we're gonna call it for a vote, all those in favor. Aye, thank you. Don, was that your hand? You don't get to vote, sorry. Okay, next, please, on the agenda.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the BHUSD twenty twenty through twenty twenty three strategic plan.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions? Dr. Breggy, anything that you wanna tell us before we vote? Any questions, board members?
Yeah, I I would just like to say that this was a long time getting this new plan in place, and this is all gonna fall, it's success will fall on accountability. So I hope that we all have the wherewithal, because we know the chain of command in the district, and we all have a part to play in making sure this succeeds. So as we adopt this today, we all have to be ready um to put our big people pants on and make people accountable. So I look forward to that.
Mr. Spitz.
Yes, uh, I wanna speak to accountability also. Uh, I think that uh, I think this is a a good and comprehensive plan uh to strengthen uh our district in in uh in every way, in in all the departments. Um, and I'm gonna make one suggestion to staff, and that is this. Um, there are, this this uh strategic plan lists approximately eighty tasks. We call them actions, but they're tasks. They indicate uh in these staffs who's gonna be working on them, the departments and so forth, but there is nobody responsible for hurting uh each each staff for seeing that it gets done. And um, so I think that it uh, it would be very, very helpful to the, to to the success of the plan if somebody could be assigned to ride herd on each task. And it shouldn't be too hard to get that person, because for example, you just take somebody from the department that's involved in each uh, in each task and uh, and have somebody in that department be responsible for following through and reporting to the individual who are responsible for the action, that action plan, there are about fourteen action plans. So that's my suggestion to staff, um, and um, and I certainly approve of of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz, Mr. Krishanian. Any questions or comments?
No.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Nope, just ready to vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Uh, just a couple of comments, please. I wanna iterate and thank all the members of the committee who worked on this so diligently for the last few months and all the hard work. And I wanna thank the committee once again for incorporating all the changes that were suggested after their first reading. And I wanna thank the fact that they were incorporated. And I just wanna remind everybody that this is not a document that gets now put in a binder and sits on a shelf. It's gonna be implemented, and we're going to have an accountability to see that we do uh reach the goals and the actions that are in there. And I have really hope that at the end of the year, we can look back and say, check them all off and know that we did what we said we're going to do. So I look forward to that time, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I did have a question. Um, Dr. Breggy, I know that some of the site councils have already started to meet this year, and I know that one of the recommendations I had was that there be coordination with the site councils, because very much so, a lot of what they do has to do with setting goals for their schools. And so just a question, has is, has that been shared? Or is that something you anticipate sharing with them in the near future? Or can you just give us a brief update, if you even know? I imagine it's all happening right now.
Sure, so it was one of the, it's the kind of thing that is, um, you know, we was, uh, we started to share it a little bit, but we had to be really cautious, because it wasn't board approved yet. Though, um, you know, as as the site plans uh continue to be developed, um, you know, as the budgets become uh aligned.
become aligned, it's, we'll just start to integrate this work into, kind of embed them in the things that we're doing. But it was the kind of thing that we had to be really careful because it wasn't approved yet, so we really couldn't, you know, share too much. So some of it's been shared, but now, you know, after tonight, tonight's successful, you'll start to see it embedded more frequently.
Just want to say, I'm so pleased that this has been done. This is a huge milestone for our district and really a testament to you, Dr. Breggy, for really putting this at the, you know, just not letting this slide and just really, you know, executing this so well. And I really want to just, you know, just Mrs. Marcus already said, thank you to all the, the teachers, everybody who was involved, but especially I want to thank Mrs. Marcus because I'm so glad that she was part of this. I can't think of a better person on the board that was part of this. And, and I'm also so pleased to, that Mrs. Mrs. Merle Bauer was also part of this. I can't think of two of the most significant educators that we've had here in the district and that live in our city who were at the helm of this. And so I'm just so pleased and honored that you were all contributors to this important document.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Well earned.
Everyone, thank you.
Yes, everybody, of course. Okay, so this is a really good thing to, to vote on. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Congratulations, we have a strategic plan. Okay, I'm moving on with our agenda. May I have a motion? I'm having, my, my system is freezing. I'm not sure why.
It's, it's from board members. I don't think we need to make a motion on this.
No motion.
No, we don't. I just can't see the agenda. It froze on my side. So I'm glad we're at the end. So.
Too long.
Right, it does feel that way. So let's see, Mrs. Mrs. Mark, Mrs. Marcus, Mrs. Walker Schuman had brought this issue and she sent an email to the entire board. So I don't think I, I replied because we should only send it to one board member. But I do appreciate the communication and then so we're glad we were able to capture it into the agenda. So we have the, I believe that the draft of, I'm sorry, the resolution that the city approved was shared on our, on our agenda, right? So it should be, it should, you know, hopefully the public has, has read and is up to speed with what we're talking about, the, the point of discussion for, for this, for right now. So, Mrs. Walker Schuman, did you want to start us in the discussion?
Yes. You know, we, we've had a couple of things happen in the last month that were kind of divisive and hateful. And I just thought now, particularly with the conversation about AB 331 would be a good time to, you know, kind of turn our attention to making sure our values are known in the district. So I pulled the, this anti-Semitism resolution that was passed by the city council on August 18th. And I, my, my intention was to use this as a starting point. We can certainly adjust and add things that are relevant. There are a couple of things that maybe we want to take out, not because they're not relevant, but because we didn't do them. The beginning of the resolution talks about the relationship between the city of Beverly Hills and the state of Israel that they entered a, to a declaration to promote and strengthen bilateral collaboration and so on. So I don't know that that's necessarily relevant to what we're doing, but, but I do think it's important to have a conversation. It's certainly something I can get behind and support. I actually am really happy that it contains the condemnation for the California Department of Education in, in regards to the ethnic studies model that was brought several years ago. I think that'll be a very clear indication for our community and for others, you know, looking at our community, a statement of our values and what we will and will not tolerate. The only question I really had, I mean, I think we need a little bit of time to go through this, rewrite it, take a look, you know, almost like a first draft. The only question I had really was from Jabari. I don't want to, I don't want to get into the crosshairs of religion taking a role in public school. And I'm, and I'm mindful and concerned about that. So I want to make sure whatever we do, if the board wants to go forward, if there's support for that, that whatever we do to write this is consistent and compliant with ed code and what's appropriate for public schools. So that's really my ask.
Okay, so Mr. Kashanian, any comments or questions?
I just, I completely agree with Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Thank you. Mr. Margot.
Um, yeah, I, I, well, I think Tristan, that you're right. I think we need to run this by council because in looking over the finer language in this, I just, I think a lot of this does not cross into school districts' boundaries and we want to make sure we don't blur those lines. Yeah, I mean, I support something that would be a resolution against anti-Semitism, absolutely. I, I, I find it, I wonder if any other schools, especially public schools in the country that are in areas similar to ours, demographics similar to ours, have anything like that? That would be something else I'd like to do a little extra research on to see if it, we don't, may not have to reinvent the wheel that may already exist. So before we start from scratch, but I'd like to look into, to those things as well. I think, I think you're right though about, once again, separation of, of church and state, right? I mean, we should, we should always be supporting, we, anti hate, we should be, you know, we should be everything. We, we, you know, we, we talk about anti-Semitism, but there's hate for a lot of things out there. We should be anti all of that. So, and, and whether it's race or religion or whatever. So we want to make sure that we also don't alienate and people don't feel that we're leaning one way and not the other because as a school district, we're not teaching hate at all. So it should be part of that language in some way. That's what I have for now. Thank you.
Maybe we make it a statement more of, I mean, specifically mentioning anti-Semitism, but also, you know, supporting diversity, inclusion. We had a, a part of our strategic plan that we just adopted says, support a positive district and school climate promoting diversity, equity and inclusion. So maybe we try to marry that idea with a, with a resolution.
Okay, so let's move on with the comments and then we'll, Mr. Spitz.
Since seeing this item on the agenda, I've given it a lot of thought. As I understand it, this suggestion goes far beyond opposing AB 331, which I subscribe to wholeheartedly. So regarding this suggestion, at this time of national introspection about intolerance and racism, I, I believe a resolution that, that concentrates only on anti-Semitism by an all-Jewish school board would be misinterpreted as indifferent to the plight of other minorities in America. I would support a broader resolution that acknowledges all intolerance and racism in our society, including anti-Semitism and calls for American citizens of every heredity to fulfill the founding fathers' vision of a tolerant and just society.
Bravo. That was beautiful.
I'll sign that now.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Marcus.
I would just like to incorporate that it be, as we pointed out a minute ago, the inclusion in the curriculum and that there would be some, just inclusion in the curriculum that we do, that we are a, in our educational, because this is coming from the school board, so it should be something that is appropriate to the schools per se. So I agree with you very much, you know, on the whole thing. And I agree with everything that's been said, but I do think that the, it, we are, we, we were talking about the schools and we need to keep that in mind. And as much as I don't want AB 331 and as everybody else does not want it, but we are going to develop a, a, a curriculum that I believe will be inclusive, that will be part of, come from partly the strategic plan. So I personally want to make sure that it's all-inclusive, but we do include that in the education of our students.
Okay, I think Mr. Spitz wants to respond to that and then I have some comments. Go ahead, Mr. Spitz.
I, I, it's my impression that our students are pretty well loaded down at the present time. Between class time and homework, they are really loaded down, especially, I would think, at the high school. And I, I'd be pretty careful about throwing more required subjects, required courses at them. I think they're loaded.
Required to do that, Mel. I, I just want to reiterate that AB 331 is going to come and force another subject on the kids. We're not going to have a choice in that.
But I think there's ways at the, when we get there, I think there's ways, Dr. Breggy, right, that we can incorporate those lessons into standing curriculum, kind of like the health initiative. I think there's way that, I think that there would still be, I mean, it hasn't been.
I would be very careful about the word that there has to be an ethics, a semester of ethics. I mean, that's, that's, that's the word there.
Ethnic studies.
Ethnic, ethnic studies, not ethics, yeah.
Ethnic studies.
Either way, I think it's worthwhile to have a resolution that states our values, even if it's not something we immediately incorporate into the, you know, the burden of the students right now. I think it's important for us to state our values and I love so far what I've heard and I'd love to be able to bring something back.
So can I just have my thought in because I haven't had a chance yet? Is that okay? So I think that along the lines with what, I totally agree with what Mel says, but I, I would like to incorporate curriculum, that we would not be adopting curriculum ever that has anything to do with a flair of anti-Semitism or, you know, that is unkind or insensitive to any culture, religion or group, you know, on the face of the earth. And I think we've all said that in different ways, but, um, so, you know, our role, where I see it being different from city council is that our role is very much in line with what happens in our schools here in Beverly Hills. And so we should be specific, not just to AB 331, but, you know, as a whole, in general terms, just being watchful and, and prudent when it comes to curriculum that the state adopts that has a flair, again, of any of these things, any of these ills, that we would not be incorporating or quick to say yes to, that we would take a stand and protect the, the values and the core of our community. So I'm, I'm not sure, that's, that sounds like a load of work for our lawyer to do, but I think that he can find a resolution with all of the things that we've kind of talked about and taking it to that next level, if there was support for that. So we'll go back to you, Mrs. Yes, so was there, would everybody be open to that? I mean, yes. Okay, well, I think that's a win. So I'm glad that you brought that up because I think as I was talking to Dr. Breggy about AB 331, I, I was aware of what the city did, but I thought this really has to be about curriculum. And so I think there's a way of tying all of this together. So I'm glad to see that happening tonight. So hopefully we can get something in play for the board to consider in the next few weeks. Yes? Great, thank you. All right, great meeting, everyone. This concludes our meeting for tonight. Thank you for staying up late. It's been eight o'clock almost. And so without further ado, have a good night. And is there anybody who wants to say anything in closing? Mr. Kashanian, I see your hand. Please.
Thank you. Uh, this is just the students' club days tomorrow, but the timing has changed from three fifteen to four to lunchtime, which is eleven ten to eleven fifty. So if you're interested in joining a club, check out the email that was sent by Mr. Hengler, which includes a spreadsheet with all seventy-two clubs that are offered at BHHS. On the spreadsheet, there is a link to a page created by each club that states what they're all about. Feel free to check that out before tomorrow at lunch so you can get an idea of which club Zoom meetings you'd like to join.
Good report, good.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Um, I just want to, in, in light of all the discussions tonight, and we won't be meeting again until the twenty-second, I would wish those that do celebrate, happy Rosh Hashanah, um, you know, because we can, right? Anyway, um, thank you.
I agree. Happy Rosh Hashanah. Thank you, everybody.
On that note of good and welfare, I just want to mention that Rabbi Nolan Levavitt from Madach Shalom is conducting a service for the Holocaust survivors called Cafe Europa on the Thursday afternoon for all of the, and there's a citywide group that he's doing this service and it's going to be beautiful and it's very touching. And also my daughter is singing.
Well, thank you so much for that, Mrs. Marcus. Have a good evening, everyone. Dr. Breggy, thank you. Dr. Harvath, Mr. Roach, Mr. Ellis, Mr. Blake and Mrs. Kashar, who, and Mr. Carey, who's still with us and all the KBEV students and Mrs. Tarkins. Thank you for all your support.
Everybody.
Have a good night.
Hey, everybody.
Take care. Bye-bye, good night.